So who are we missing?
Judy.
Judy.
The Adac.
So, so what happened? So Judy's not gonna be the...
Yeah, they switched back.
They did?
Yeah.
David had given it up because his daughter was boxing and he had to take her to boxing on Thursday nights.
She quit boxing?
I think the season's over.
Oh.
And Judy was like, boy, this is almost like going back to work.
Uh-oh.
Really? We scared her?
No, me, because we used to share a room at work together.
Is she, is she retired from Hanover now?
Oh, yeah. She's been retired for like five years.
Oh, really?
She had, she had data stuff there, right?
She was zoning administrator. She did not do minutes for the planning board. She just did zoning.
Yeah.
Lot of zoning permits every year.
Yeah. Nine bet.
Did you guys, New Hampshire Electric Cooperative, two women on the board designed accusing them of sexism, misogyny? I thought, oh, my God.
On the Metro Electric Park?
Yeah.
And they're investigating it?
Yeah.
Well, they are.
That's where Brian Callen, who was now head of CPC and H, came from, New Hampshire Electric Park.
Interesting.
Well, it's at least seven o'clock, so perhaps we should start.
Oh, three, yeah.
Seven oh three. Good evening. I guess our first item on the agenda is approval of the June thirteenth minutes. Do we have any suggestions, corrections, deletions?
I thought there was some confusion about the traffic plan that needed to be straightened out in the minutes.
Yes. So on page two, like the pages third of the way down, provide a traffic plan, et cetera, et cetera, into and out of the premises, and then there's a parenthetical thought, I thought we discussed waiving an actual traffic plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my comment back then. Where is that on this?
It's page two, third of the way down, end of the paragraph that starts, provide a traffic.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't think we wanted one.
Yeah, I think they waived it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was one of your comments.
Yeah, okay.
The other...
So that, that will, that whole paragraph?
Yeah, I'll move that down to the part where they're waived.
Okay.
The other question I had about this as I listened in, did we offer any advice about treating the tiny house, treating the barn and the tiny house as separate applications?
I think he, he took the tiny house off.
Well, at the meeting, yes. Now he, after he's updated everything, he's put it back on. And he's going to ask for an approval pending getting accepted for it.
Okay. I mean, so do we need to say anything at all about that here? I was listening, I was remote and listening carefully, but not, not sure how many sugar.
I, I think he had, he had just said, well, maybe I'll just remove the tiny house, but it was...
Okay.
Yeah.
He's gonna add a third unit in the barn also, but...
Oh.
Okay.
So the, halfway down page three, it says the board decided, they said, provided information, the following application requirements could be waived. And it's not clear to me when, whether this list actually goes all the way to the end. Are we waiving everything up to the board did not vote to approve?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
David, somewhere in there, I think I read, he wants a pad for the little tiny house?
Yeah.
I don't, okay. I don't remember. Yeah. So he was a part concrete or whatever.
Yeah, I think he's gonna, it's gonna be just hard pack, and I think it's already there.
Well, that's what I was thinking of. I thought it was already there, so I was wondering why he wanted it up, why he wanted it up.
He showed us a picture of it.
Yeah. So he doesn't, he doesn't even need to do anything for it.
They just needs the approval for the extra unit and...
And the septic.
Yeah.
Oh, he needs a lot of dimensional stuff submitted.
Yeah.
To speak to Nat's question, would it be helpful to say, make this list of items that were deficiencies in the application, make them bullet points, and then say the board decided based on that these requirements could be waived and then another...
Second bullet.
Because what that does is it separates the two. Thank you.
Yeah, it just, it just makes it a little hard to understand because some of them actually sound like things that need to be done.
You know, I just had typed up, page one, under item three, third line, it cares to short-term renters with an average stay of...
Yeah, around six.
Oh, I actually...
I didn't think it was that long.
I was thinking the same thing. I thought he told us like three to six months or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew he has nurses, you know, traveling nurses, so they probably are three to six months.
Yeah, I agree. It wasn't an average of six months. It was like a max of six months.
But do we need to say anything about it anyway? I mean, does that matter?
Well, I think it'd be good to at least have documentation as to how the property's being used now.
Yes, but saying, I mean, just saying short-term rather than putting an apple on it.
Short-term means like less than thirty days in Hanover. So, I mean, some places describe a particular meaning and that would be seen as more long-term in a lot of places.
I think the other thing that I missed when David sent it to me, but there was, we did have discussion about the fact that this was categorized as...
Lodging accommodations.
Well, it was people transient.
Yeah.
It was, it was tran, that that was how it was being, that's why it could be considered. Is that right?
Yep.
And...
So does transient have a term definition?
It does in some ordinance. It says not ours.
Because somebody could be there for six months and get a mailbox or whatever.
Well, they'd have to get an address through the town, and that would let me know that someone's trying to live there permanently. And you would get a letter from me saying, you're in violation of the ordinance because you're only allowed one principal activity on the lot. And you have lodging and accommodations and, but it doesn't stop anyone from getting a P O box.
Yeah, I guess that's what I meant. Like a child, a nurse that's here six months, she'd wanna get mail or something.
Right, and I have no way of regulating that, you know, there's absolutely no way of me knowing that somebody got a P O box. Now, if the town clerk's office, if they tell you about it, then I know about it, but, you know...
Yeah, because some people, they have P O boxes.
Right, and so, you know, the chances of them knowing that the physical address is there, and they're just gonna come in and say, I want a license, here's my P O box, you're in line.
But is there, is there a sentence that we can add in this discussion here at the beginning of item three that... Because, yeah, he did say that it's a bed and breakfast, but it doesn't serve breakfast. And then we did have this discussion that, that it's, that this couldn't turn into, oh, somebody has a special needs child. And, well, we didn't have that discussion, but as in my thoughts was, somebody could come in and live here for six months because they wanted their kid to be in the school system.
Yeah.
But we're, there's this fine line, I guess.
I thought that it caters to short-term renters was kind of trying to... Say, that's where I was trying to say that it was, we're not talking about permanent.
Well, you want us to add in not permanent residents? Caters to short-term renters and not permanent residents?
Well, this is, this is in the minutes of the, of the meeting, I mean...
We, we talked about it, though. What, what's going on there and the fact that I don't think we should be reviewing, I don't think we can review, multi-family development there. And it's not that, so...
So this, you're saying this is Mr. Waymire's testimony?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I see.
That, that he's still got a lodging accommodation, but he doesn't, and nobody has a lease, so they just go month to month.
Right.
And I guess that works.
You think we need a definition of, at some point, I mean, now we don't have a transient?
I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, it's a, what if all of a sudden he wanted to condominiumize each one of those rooms? Just as happened at my lawn lodge, right? Then what? I mean...
Well, you'd still have to go through site plan review because you're doing a conversion from lodging accommodations to multi-family.
Be more than that. It would be a zoning issue.
Yeah, well, definitely would be a zoning issue.
Yeah, yeah.
He, I've discussed that already because he would very much like to have a mixture of permanent residence and lodging accommodations.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole other ballgame.
Yeah, well, it's not allowed into the zoning, so without a change to the zoning, it's not allowed.
Well, I mean, I, I guess I'm just, if, if we think we're covered, then I'm okay. I just, I do know that I brought up the issue of, of, you know, the reason that we're looking at this is because it was transient and not permanent, permanent renters or whatever.
Yeah, it seems like this vagary is out there. It doesn't necessarily have anything to do with him and/or his place, but it's just out there in terms of renting something.
Well, actually, it does have to do with his place.
Why specifically? I mean, how is he different than...
He's, I mean, it's changed from like a place where you would go for, you know, Dartmouth graduation and football weekends to more of a place where people are actually residing and working. They're not visiting, and that's different.
Right.
But do we actually have a, what, what ordinance addresses that specifically? How is it worded?
Well, we have a zoning ordinance that talks about lodging accommodations, and we have a zoning ordinance that's, you know, says basically, you know, no more than six units in a structure. And he's got way more than six rental units there.
Right.
So that switch is, hasn't been anticipated by the ordinance, but we don't have like a definition of transient, so we, you know.
Right.
We don't say, oh, it's only for weekends or Dartmouth graduation.
That's my point.
Right.
That it, that we don't have that.
We don't have that.
So it doesn't specifically apply to him. It's a problem with our ordinance.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, and that's why I was saying maybe we need a definition of transient.
Well, you know, that can happen for a meeting, but in the short term, he's here and we can't hold him up because of that.
Yeah, we can't, yeah, we can't tell him he's doing anything wrong. We haven't defined what wrong.
Well, if the zoning administrator said, this doesn't feel right to me, or it doesn't look right to me, then the zoning board would be considering that type of thing. The planning board can say, oh, we're concerned about this not, use not being appropriate, but a neighbor could, could appeal it on that kind of use definition, but, yeah. So for now, we just do the best we can and think about, well, should we try to make it more clear?
Yeah, because as David said, somebody could move in there, live there for a year and get a P O box and, you know, live here, and David, you would never know.
Yep.
So that's, yeah.
Well, I, I guess I'm dropping my concern because there's nothing we can do, but...
I move minutes as a minute.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Actually, do we have?
We have four.
Four.
You have a quorum, yeah. You have a quorum. Do we want to designate another alternate?
Um, I don't think we're...
Replace David, except for with this one number.
Yes, okay, so I probably can't vote, like...
It's unanimous with the members who are here. Okay. So we have perhaps some more housing chapter discussions. And then I also wanted to just bring up or mention as new business, Rich shared with me some, some thoughts before our last meeting about public participation and as, and also as it relates to housing. And so I did wanna, you know, reserve a little bit of time to at least share Rich's memo with the board, and then we can either talk about it tonight, or we can think about it and then come back next time and talk about it. But why don't I pass out copies of this? There you go.
Seen this.
So I, I think what I'd like to do is, is maybe we can talk about the housing chapter for forty-five minutes or an hour, and then we could go into this and see where people wanna take it. I don't see a need for us to stay for a super long time tonight, so I'd be aiming to get out of here at eight-thirty.
Oh, God, he's gonna watch the debate.
Gives him time to mix a cocktail.
I was gonna say.
I think it's time to drink some of them before.
We call it pre-gaming?
Or fall asleep before it comes on.
Yeah. So, um, one of the things I was thinking we might wanna talk about is, is Rich's review of the fair share of our housing. And I, I guess I for one look at it and go, well, that's awfully nice of them to tell us that we need to be growing at a super fast rate compared to what we've been growing at. And then the other thought I had was, Vicki, you handed out this appendix C at the end of last meeting.
Yep. That was just the kind of background data that Hanover used in their town plan for housing. And so, I mean, in some cases, the tables include lime, and in other cases, you know, it's just like, oh, here's what they looked at. So if people, somebody wanted to dive into numbers that provide background for our community, there's a template for, you know, an example.
I, I have, if I could, I wanted to ask you, Vicki, if you're familiar with this. One of the things I noticed in Hanover's plan, which then kind of follows through with the Keys to the Valley, is between twenty-twenty and twenty-thirty, Hanover is projecting like a seven and a half percent increase in housing units. And then after that period, it dies down quite a bit. And I think that that's kind of mirrored in what the Keys to the Valley came forward with in terms of, there's a lot of housing units being proposed, and why is, why is Hanover drop-off after twenty-thirty?
You have to talk to the, you know, people put that model together.
Yeah.
I mean, there's one thing about, you know, population growth, and then there's the other with the taking up the employees that are supposed to come in to work at the businesses. Like Rich explained in his housing needs study methodology, there are two components they look at. And so that's probably what the model generated. Why, I don't know. I mean, I didn't get involved in, you know, asking them, oh, what the heck? I just said, you know, these people were objective, they looked at the whole region, things, you know, and so they know much more about it actually than I do. So that's a great guess, just of what it would be.
Because I just, I was just kind of wondering, did Dartmouth get approval? Or has Dartmouth gone ahead and really expanded, and now a lot of it is trying to catch up with...
Well, Dartmouth has got a slow creep. What we have is a lot of graduate students that didn't used to be around. And so the graduate schools have grown a lot. The undergraduate population has not grown a lot. But with that, the college, instead of putting people into this small rural places...
I was gonna say, it's gotten a little bit more luxurious than the...
Yeah, the accommodations, you know, rooms have gotten bigger, and they've had to take rooms out of service because they put kitchens on every floor and then study rooms on every floor. So just the way that students use space has become different, and they need more storage, and they have more stuff. So it, the space needs have changed.
It's like all our cars are...
Yeah, but still, it, it, they're still talking about housing units, and they, you know, they've got a significant number of housing units that they're projecting they need in the next ten years.
Thayer's, Thayer School and Tuck School have expanded quite a bit. I don't think the Med School has particularly.
I, all I, all of, you know, if I had my Hanover master plan, I could tell you what the graduate student population is. You know, it's also pretty elusive because even though they're enrolled, it doesn't mean they live in Hanover, and most of them don't live in Hanover. In fact, you know, Sagium, which is there for graduate housing, is in Lebanon anyway. And then all their summit on Jupiter and all that is in Lebanon, so, yeah.
Yeah. So I...
Your summit on... Yeah, where is that?
It's a model that's, I, I have a little bit of experience because a, a number of schools around the country are, are doing this where a private company will develop something and then rent out to a dedicated population of students. So it's a property owner and management, and they can, they can charge wicked rents because compared to, because essentially they can charge what you would be to live in a dorm, to live in an apartment. And dorms are way more expensive to live in.
Well, that's how, that's what happened in Hanover. That's why their rents are so high.
My daughter lived in one, University of Minnesota, when she went out there. It was very effective, very clean, you know, well-made. It's done well. It's, it's a good thing, but...
Well, if you look at it, you know, if you're in a large institution, you don't want the stuffy facility maintenance. And what's more of a headache than managing students?
Right.
Who are residents there, so, yeah, of course, you know, give that to somebody else to take care of. So that's totally happening, you know, nationwide, and, you know, for students, some don't like to deal with Dartmouth directly anyway, so then they deal with another landlord. But, so it's, it's hard to track. I mean, what we've talked about is having ninety percent of the undergraduate population housed on campus in the college master plan. And because there's always gonna be older students or students that have been to prep school, they've had the dorm experience. They don't wanna be in a dorm, and they wanna live off campus. There's like always some people who, you know, dorm life is gonna be right for.
I have a little insight into the housing, shape of the housing curve going forward. There's a lot of pent-up demand now, but that's the, the models are trying to fulfill. But if you look at Vermont and New Hampshire, and Maine too, the deaths are outpacing births. So all, all of the population growth is from migration, and that's slowing down, it's slowing down. I mean, there was a, there was a bulge, and COVID contributed some of that as well.
Yeah.
So, so you're saying that in the future, there won't be as much need for...
Well, it won't grow as fast.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because as people die off in those houses, yeah.
I think Maine and New Hampshire, two of the oldest states.
Maine, I think, is the oldest.
But we're, like, New Hampshire's like, yeah, we're...
Second or third, I can't remember.
Yeah, yeah, so things are changing.
And, you know, certainly in the regional housing needs assessment, the, the other reason for the decreasing number of new units over time is there's a dearth of units right now. And part of their model was to say, let's get, let's cause there to be enough units so that there's a five percent rental pool.
Vacancy, vacancy, maybe.
And then two percent for, for private homes, which, which is a healthy market, which is not everybody charging confiscatory, I mean, charging very high rates because, well, where else are you gonna rent? So...
There's always gonna be some vacancy associated with housing as there's turnover. You know, the old owners move out, old renters move out, landlord takes a month to paint and break down a new floor. So, you know, that's seen as normal.
Hanover instituted some limits because they were feeling like Airbnb's were taking up a lot of the slack, didn't they?
Well, we have short-term rental rules.
Right.
That's why, you know, transient is defined and short-term is defined.
Right.
And for the most part, what they say is, you know, you've got a lot more time that you can use your property for short-term rental if you are present, so it's hosted, that's called hosted. And then not hosted, you know, everybody gets so many days. And there's a slightly different approach from downtown to, or Goose Pond, where summer homes have been the tradition, and people, you know, always renting them out for two-week periods.
That whole section of town is only a hundred and eighty-five days a year, isn't it?
Yes, it's seasonal, yeah, well, but there are some grandfather places there, so that there are year-round residents there. And it's all a matter of how do you enforce that to make sure that they're there for more than a hundred and eighty-five days? And same with the short-term rental is, you know, and that means you're looking at listings and particular properties. So that's a, a management problem that Hanover, I don't know even if they can actually do it with...
Who would, I mean, who would enforce it, and will the penalties be enough to pay for that person's position in any case?
Well, there are, there's, you know, if you get caught, you have to take it off the rental market or something, so I forget what the... There are consequences, and they have rental housing inspector person who's, that's their job, so... In addition to looking at rental housing and making sure it's safe. Yeah, but the models and the, I guess the predilection to try to address the shortages now are making it so more needed, and then it trails off.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're, you know, one of the things that, it's interesting, you know, the part of it is natural growth, the population, the other is like employment. So in my thinking about that, it's not natural growth anyway because we're losing population. I think in the past three years, I saw Lime was the only town in Grafton County.
Lost three, three residents.
Three residents, yeah, which is like margin of error, you know, who knows? But, so what is the kind of natural demand from internal growth anyway? And, and then I look at the stuff, you know, housing employees is kind of more of our regional fair share type of thing. And it'd be interesting to know, you know, those numbers they gave us, how much came from which of those pools of, you know, housing demand? Just to say, you know, I think everyone would agree that the natural increases, I mean, we do have an obligation, and then it's the question of, can we sell people on the fact that you need to accommodate the employment growth in the Upper Valley and that kind of regional thing, so...
And so I'm not, I don't know enough to specifically endorse these numbers. My, my brief was, can, can you get an overview of their methodology?
Right, yep.
I think that they looked at, what they think the population's gonna be.
Well, it's, it's not entirely fair to say, we are not growing and we're not even projected to grow because we're basing that on our history.
Right.
When we don't have any place to grow into. In other words, we don't have any buildings. We don't have any, we don't have the rental capacity. So that's what they're trying to establish. They're trying to say, you should grow just like everybody else grows. And so therefore you need to build these buildings and if you build it, they will come.
Yep.
That's what they're saying.
Yeah. That's what the kind of regional fair share is all about.
Right.
And, you know, there are towns like Dorchester and Orford and, you know, other communities that are like us, that are infrastructure poor and, um, you know, and have small schools and that type of thing. So, um, and the whole concept of fair share housing, you know, goes way back in constitutional law. And, um, so it's just a thing that we have in our country, that obligation to provide fair share housing and not pull up robberages or create moats around your communities. So that, even if we feel like that wa- isn't the right thing, legally it is. We have to accommodate in some way.
Well, yeah, so, so, I mean, that brings up the question, you know, how do we, how do we do that if our community is not in favor?
Well, we're not going to because we won't be able to institute changes in our zoning. But I think what we come up with is a plan to address that demand as we were doing with looking at, well, how many units could we accommodate in downtown Lime? You know, and, you know, could we put, focus it there and focus it maybe in our commercial district? So it's coming up with a plan that, you know, is rational and, and possible and doesn't put huge demands on our services and.
And then letting them vote on it.
And then letting them vote on it. That's, that's all we can do. I mean, I don't think we're gonna like, you know, split or double density across the whole town.
No, and then it may or may not happen.
Right.
You know, we could do it. Cause as far as single family homes, it seems like we can't do much to really increase in, you know, the amount of single family homes being built, I don't think. I mean, with, you know.
Why do you say that, Tim?
Well, because the land is so expensive, so you have to wait till somebody has the money to buy the land and build. You know, it's sort of a gradual thing, which is what's been happening more recently.
But, you know, like suppose you lowered the lot size, something like that, then, then you don't have to buy as much land.
Yeah.
And that, that lowers the expense to an extent. And if you, you know,
I guess.
Change, change some of the dimensions of what, what can be built there, you can, you know.
I guess, except a lot is a lot. I mean, I, my, uh, what I've noticed is that, you know, you have a ten acre or you have a five acre lot or you have a twenty acre lot, there isn't much difference, you know, it's a lot to build on. So there's not a huge amount of difference.
But if you reduce your, your dimensional controls for lots, then the possibility of subdivision becomes greater.
Right.
And so you can.
But I think to Tim's point, I mean, a lot is a lot, I mean.
It's not necessarily gonna be less expensive.
It's not gonna be less expensive.
Right, yeah, I, I found.
Large lots are cheaper per acre. But, I mean, absolutely small lots are cheaper.
But I was looking, uh, well, you know, this is twenty years ago, but when I was looking for a lot to build in Fairly, um, I found that anything between two and twelve acres was the same price.
Right.
There was no difference.
Yeah, well, I guess that's what I was.
Price. So, I mean, what, to your point, do we know whether it would make sense to, to make, allow smaller lot sizes?
Well, I mean, I think, I think we, we don't wanna get like wrangling about specific points before we think about sort of larger issues that, um, I mean, we, we won't know what the result or the potential result of any change we make is. I mean, it's all because you're interacting with an individual's, you know, a bunch of different individuals who will or will not, property owners who will or will not take advantage of whatever rule is changed. But I think that, um, if you, if you look at some of the things that are existing at the moment and you ask the question, you know, if something terrible happened and Lime burned down, could you rebuild Lime, the, the common district as it is with the current zoning? And the answer is no. And so everybody's happy with the way the Lime Common District looks. And if you relax some of the rules there to allow some infill or, you know, you let people put units in barns and have less parking or, you know, not be required to live on the property if you have an ADU, you know, which is what the requirements are at the moment. Or let have, let people have two ADUs. You know, some of those ma- small changes that are pretty harmonious with the current structures that are there might yield, you know, a few more units around town, which would, you know, at least can create the conditions that are not hostile to that kind of thing. Rather than, you know, out and out, just like saying, yes, we're gonna, you know, put an apartment building on this corner. We're saying like, you know, one or two here, three or four over here in this existing barn. And then, you know, the site plant review requires it to keep looking like a barn or something, you know?
So that, that brings up a, a good point. People are happy with the look and feel of the Lime, um, common area at least. So, so are, is everything actually one, one acre there?
No.
Yeah, so i- if you want it to grow in a way that people are happy with, then it would, it would seem like you could downsize the lot size because that's still gonna be consistent with the same look and feel.
Yeah, the septic soils are poor and we need to accommodate septic.
Sure.
Systems, that's the, that's the thing about the smaller lot size.
It's, it's absolutely proper for the planning board to insist that you have a septic field and.
Well, you have, like state law.
You got it, but exactly, and, and.
But we don't have to worry about it.
But that's not something, I mean, if we said, we're gonna allow two hundred by, uh, no, that's a, that's a big number. Fifty by fifty lots, that'd be crazy, but we all could sit here and say, no, you can't possibly get a septic field in there. But if we did allow smaller lot sizes in areas where we thought additional density would be good, it becomes incumbent on the, the applicant, the property owner to say, no, no sweat, I had, talked to my design engineer, we can do this. That then, well, that does a couple of things. First off, it makes it reasonable for the property owner even to engage with an engineer to say whether it's possible. And then to do all the other work.
But it would have to be the whole of Lime Common, you'd have to change it for the, you couldn't do it piecemeal.
No.
But I mean, to do the whole Lime Common.
No, exactly.
Right.
Sure.
Or, well, we could create a different, we could do our density, dense Lime Common area and a less dense Lime Common area.
Create a whole new.
Yeah, which is sort of divided in half.
Or potentially, you know, what would happen if you expanded the Lime Common District? You know, a hundred yards south on Route ten? I mean, what, what would that, what would the effect of that be? With the smaller lot sizes allowed?
Yeah, I don't know, you have to look at it.
Exactly, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think in modest changes that just oil the system a little bit, you know?
Well, no, I think there are definitely areas in, within the Lime Common now that we could infill and.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what's happening with the same, I guess Brett owns the same thing, doesn't he?
Yeah.
I don't know what's gonna happen. And then Green Mountain Studios.
That's another place.
Yeah, those two are obvious places.
And there's a big piece of land between Green Mountain Studios and the house up behind.
Right.
Yeah, and that's all, you know, kind of walking distance. Like you start talking, you know, going south, you're getting farther.
Right, but I mean, what's the lane that goes off to the left as you're heading?
Brook.
There's the.
Brook Lane, there's Brook Road.
Brook Road.
Is that the Brook Road, I mean, is that, I don't think that's in the Common District. But, but it's pretty walkable.
Maybe we need to talk to Brett, see if we can talk to him, he, he literally is coming to our meeting.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm just like, well Brett, the question is, what, what we really want is like to do a housing project and would he be willing to, you know, work with another developer? You know, to change those, you know, his pro- that property.
Cause he seems to control.
Those properties.
Control the two that we're talking.
Yeah. And I don't know how big, you know, one Lime Common, how, does he have room in the back there to create more? Cause he's got.
Oh, where's that, the city building?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, there might be more potential there too.
Yeah. Vicky, getting back to your thing about fair share, I, I guess, I guess I am, well, I'm definitely not aware of any of the principles or, or requirements or, or, um, I don't understand how the RPC or whatever can just say, oh, well, you have to build so many units. I mean, I would contest that, I would say, no, we don't have to do that.
They're not, they're not saying we have to, they're just.
I mean, I, I don't know.
There's, there's an RSA that suggests how many.
They're saying we have to, we have to, as Vicky said, make a plan.
That allows.
And they feel they have leverage over us because they, because we only exist through their granting us the privilege to plan for the town.
They don't have leverage over us because they've got no authority at all. They're just a planning organization. But they've been told by the state that they need to come up with this fair share analysis, you know, every.
And therefore the state endorses it, presumably.
That's, well, what they come up with, I mean, they, they spend a lot of time looking into that, you know, stuff and, and, and have thought about how the region works. And in fact, they've worked with the two other planning regions so that we have the modification also. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's as good an effort as anyone can do, in my view. I think they did a really good job. But again, it's a model, uses assumptions and, uh, you know, but it's like, it's, you can probably picket it and but, you know, are you gonna come up with a better regional model than they have? I don't, I don't think so.
There's, there's an RSA that talks about.
Yes, there is.
And, and nobody has actually sued Lime, but, you know.
You don't wanna be there.
Exactly.
That's the thing is that for us to be responsive to what our regional fair share is, keeps us from having lawsuits.
Exactly.
And, um, you know, or if we do have a lawsuit, we have backup that says, well, we've tried and it's really not our fault that nobody is building housing in Lime. And, um, you know, so what we don't have here is a lot of investors that are holding on and waiting for the right moment to, you know, develop their property. You know, that's just not the nature of the ownership in Lime.
Right.
So, and, you know, for a developer, it's a bad place to be because we don't have water, we don't have sewer. And, um, if you're not on Route ten, you're, you got bad, kind of not so great roads. So it's not bad, but they're, they're not so great.
They're not high density roads.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, that, that new housing, the new Twin Pines thing opened in White River.
Yep.
And I heard on the radio, it's just opposite Listen Center?
Six seventy-four fifteen.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, along White River.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So they, uh, uh, if, what I heard on the radio is correct, they, they have forty-two units and it costs sixteen million dollars. So it's basically four hundred thousand dollars a unit.
Right, yep.
And that's on public water and sewer, I mean.
And that's using subsidies beyond.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yes. They've, they've got federal subsidies, so.
Subsidies to build and then they're going to be reliant on.
Then it constrains who can rent it.
On subsidies, subsidizing the renter, the rents as well?
Right, those people that have vouchers, the section eight vouchers.
Yeah.
So Hummer's on rent?
I don't know what the rent is, but it's four hundred thousand.
If it's section, section eight, it's, uh, rent controlled based on your income.
But it costs four hundred thousand to build it.
But that gives the, the landlord the deficit, you know, the difference between what the renter pays and, um, and what the going rate is.
Yeah, but they need to charge to get their money back in a reasonable amount of time.
So, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a good question. We, we, do we want that here?
What?
Something like that, that much.
I mean, I, I, I don't think anybody's proposing that.
I don't think that there's any problem with it at all, so I don't mind it at all. So, I mean.
Okay, can I?
My, my kids, I don't know what your kids do, but my kids, you know, they have a hard time finding housing. And, um, you know, and some, I know a lot of my kids' friends are, you know, they're in fifteen dollar an hour jobs and, and that's seen as good, but you, how can you afford? And if somebody's out on maternity leave and you have only one income, I mean, yeah, you, you, you need help.
So where do those incomes come in then in White River? Where do they, and where do the rents come in relative, is that, are they affordable housing? There's, so there's sixty percent median income?
What they say, some is for veterans, some is for homeless. So probably zero, zero income. And then the other would be probably eligible people who make, you know, a certain amount and, you know, but not too much and then are eligible. So it was a mixed housing.
So it's all sort of affordable?
It's at different levels for sure. They're bringing homeless people in and, and, you know, special veterans program. So I don't know what those levels are, but the scale of that, I don't believe is appropriate for Lime.
The leach field alone.
Well, yeah, um, you know, it's, it's just too big, but, and it's located where it should be. Right on the main, they're on the advanced transit, they can, uh, you know, Clara Martin Center's not far, you know.
The co-what, food, foods right there.
Yeah, the food's right there, uh, they've got Listen across the street where there's suppers.
And social services.
Yep, and.
Yeah, so.
So the scale that makes sense to you is more like six?
Maybe like six. Like we have, yeah. I mean, I don't really wanna discriminate against who lives there. I mean, six in a, six units in a building is kind of what we've said feels about right.
Now, if, now if we go to six, I mean, I would imagine if you have forty-five, then there's some economies of the scale that, that, that maybe puts you in the range of being able to get everything subsidized. But if you're only at six and you're in Lime, is there still a good chance you can get it?
It's, it's exactly what the guy next to Chapman's did.
Yep, yep.
When he's got the.
Jonah, yeah, Jonah.
Jonah Richard, yeah.
Jonah Richard, he's got the coffee shop on the floor's floor and five or six, is it?
He's got sixty.
Eight, he is.
Eight, is it, yeah. And he has a blog that goes through how he gets to, you get discriminated against by the government if you're doing small.
Yep.
Right.
But how he has worked it all the way through and he's made it affordable housing.
Well, is he extraordinary or can we do?
He was diligent, he was very.
Very tenacious.
So it's not easy.
It's not easy.
At, at that size.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's in Fairly, not in Lime, which is gonna be harder to do.
Well, we don't, you know.
Cause it's gonna be more expensive.
Depends, he probably didn't get the land for free, for example.
Right.
I mean, well, I mean, in Hanover, every affordable, every, every affordable housing project in Hanover, the town gave the land to the developer. Okay, every, every case. So, um, yeah, so, I mean, that's sometimes what you need to do. And even there, I mean, it was very difficult, like the project across the street from the high school, that was town land, town did all the demolition or, you know, worked with that and then disconnected utilities and put in the new utilities to last site work. And even there, they had a very hard time because you have to produce those units for under, I don't know what it was there, if it was two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars or something. They had, they had a ceiling, they couldn't exceed that. So what they did was they put in the conduit in hopes that they'd be able to put solar on the roof and then got, you know, solar on the roof, you know, through another grant source. So, you know, it's, it's very difficult. And the, the follow-up and, and Fairly, I don't think you had any gifts like that. And the follow-up and, and fairly, I don't think he had any gifts like that. So he was buying land and, and doing all of his own site work.
He, he did ultimately get some money from the state of Ramon.
Oh, he got, he got some subsidy money.
Yeah, he got it.
But he didn't have the town of Hanover giving them land and doing, you know, physical site work and installing utilities. So, so it is possible, and he.
Does, does Lime have land in the common that it could give?
No.
No. No land. There's, there's some, the, the horse sheds are.
That's owned by the church.
No, the horse sheds are owned by the church, the land is owned by the town.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And then going behind that.
So you could rip down the horse.
The foreign legion.
The foreign legion is.
Eighteen feet.
Right behind that, up on the hill, there's the foreign legion, and that's on town property also.
Aren't there the American Legion?
Or American, whatever that.
Yep, yep.
The Legion.
A bunch of people in, that's what those people would be raising.
I hope they have the like little.
Oh, yeah.
Strike things, yeah, we run the foreign legion.
That's the French foreign legion.
There you go.
You're thinking of Gary Cooper.
Yes, I am.
Anyway, the legion will just call us.
Yeah.
Then Sean Matt, he's the post.
But I think we also have to think about the pro- about the property taxes and, you know, I mean, as towns grow, the taxes go up, and it's a good example. So we do have to think about, and the school, you know, well, as far as growth, we just have to think about the kids and how much our taxes are gonna go up.
So I think, you, there's, you have to be really careful with that argument because if you put a lot of units, if you put a bunch of three hundred fifty thousand dollar properties, apartments, homes, condos, on a very small parcel. The property tax that comes out of that acre is really enormous.
But from what I've read, that often doesn't, usually doesn't offset the extra cost to the town, so.
For.
Really does, look at Lebanon, I mean, Lebanon's growing like crazy and their taxes are just, people are just going crazy, you know, Lebanon with property taxes.
The, I mean, the other thing is how many kids, I mean, schools is obvious, it's not even a elephant in the room. We've talked about it, schools, the number of kids in.
A bunch of kids, yeah.
Schools is a concern. Small units don't attract people with kids, so.
Lebanon taxes have gone up because of their infrastructure projects.
Right, Lebanon's taxes. Growth, yeah.
No, they had combines, storm and sewer, I mean, they, you just try to group and drive through, and they've been redoing, redoing sidewalks and all their infrastructures being fixed.
Yeah.
So, and that's all deferred, they need to do it because, you know, they.
The valuation was redone a couple of years ago, and what happened was that the housing increased disproportionate to the businesses, so all the residents felt like their taxes went up. The valuation of the businesses didn't go up as much as the value of the houses.
Well, think about the pressure they have with the hospital there, and everybody wanting to live close to work.
Right.
It's just crazy.
Oh, yeah, it's growing like crazy, I mean, all those units they're building that they have, our nurses there.
Oh.
Yeah. The taxes go up.
Well, so, in addition to ADUs, which, you know, we, I guess we.
We allow.
We, we already allow.
We allow one, but you have to be an owner resident.
Well, then what's the difference between a two-family or a multifamily rental, if you're not living there?
But, but if, if you wanted to rent your house out after you've built the ADU, what, what happens then?
Right, then what do you have, you got a duplex or a multi, you know, or if you've got two ADUs and the rent, you know, so then you've got a.
So what happens to it?
Multifamily. Well, if you have certain absentee landowners, it's not a good thing. For a month, for, because there's nobody there to monitor what's going on, especially with students.
Yeah, headers run into that a lot, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's been terrible. People, yes, with kids using ovens for their, that's where their clothes are put, and they live in the, you know, sleep on the floor of what was supposed to be a kitchen, cause they can go eat at the dining hall. I mean, really bad things, and, 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 you know, the number of kids that they pack into the basement, and, you know, with no proper means of egress. There've been some really bad things, and mice and mold and, you know. So if you happen to live there, you know, proximate on the property, you might know about those things and care about those things a little bit more than if you had an investment property and were just renting. And, you know, you'd probably keep your yard a little nicer, and.
But what, how is that different from just having a house that's rented? I mean, it, it's sort of a different.
Well, there's only one family unit or, you know, there then. And presumably, you know, they can't blame it on the next unit for the trash in the yard. Or, you know, they're responsible for the loud party because they're the ones that are.
I mean, we have a lot of second homes in here, they're empty half the time, which is.
Yep.
Sort of criminal, but.
Well, they don't need to be, they can be rented, they don't prevent people from doing that.
Oh, no, 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 I know that, but it just, you know, it's like.
Yeah, it's creating a market where there's, you know, absentee landlord and that kind of investment. And that's, it tears apart neighborhoods. I mean, there's some towns in the Midwest where the large universities are, that the whole neighborhood is gone because they've been bought up, loaned, and they're just rented out throughout football weekends. Right, and all of a sudden, and actually my old boss who lives over in Wolfboro, he's, you know, most of his neighborhood or street where it used to be families now is vacation rentals.
Right.
And, you know, kids have nowhere to go for Halloween anymore. Well, but it's, that's not community, that's like a commodity, and that you're just.
You know, we were doing property tax analysis, trying to figure out why Lime was so high and why other places. And, you know, Lincoln is low because of all the ski condos and all the second homes.
Yep.
Their property taxes are really low, like.
How about Newberry or the, the, you know, towns around Lake Sunapee, same.
Yeah, but we're high, one of our appraisals were higher, then there was the same house in Lime that would be in Orford is appraised a lot more in Lime, you know, it was the same house.
The appraisal sort of doesn't matter.
Right, it's how much the town spends, obviously, that's the whole key.
And, I mean, they were just saying sto, all the property values doubled, but the taxes went down.
Right.
Because you're raising a fixed amount and you just have now a bigger denominator.
Right, well, that's what some people forget, that it's really how much money you spend, it's not anything else.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I think that whole thing about community is really important, that we try to keep it to be a place where people, you know, wanna live in, we do have community because people live there and, you know, interact because they're running into each other on the street or sidewalk or walking their dog.
Couldn't agree more, Vicky, I'm just looking at all the volunteer organizations that I'm part of, and I'm like, I'm sixty-nine years old and I'm like the youngest one in the. You know, we, we want community, we're gonna have to get some of the younger folks to, to be here.
Is that because, you know, raising kids is so much harder now?
Oh, absolutely, it is, but, but also the, the, the population in general is older in Lime than it used to be, I think.
The whole state.
Yes, but.
But Lime is, is one of the oldest towns in, in the state.
Right, but we also have like the only growing school enrollment.
Not falling.
Not, not falling.
Not falling, I guess.
Well, it's up and down, but it stays pretty strong, yeah. Well, there are, there are some younger kids moving back, I've, I've been doing now, three, three parents that are.
There's tons of kids.
That are moving back to Lime, that have grown up here and want to come back. But they also have enough financial resources to be able to do it. But they're, they are coming back, there are young people coming back.
Is it Heidi Caldwell, we bought Michael Whitman's house?
Yep, well, she moved up from Lebanon.
Yeah.
And, yeah, well.
And Julie.
Megan and.
You.
Sue Hewitts.
Right.
Daughter.
Yeah.
And Ben Byswinger bought the Dares house.
Oh, really?
Yep, and then, well, we have Sarah Mason, you know, Eck, on Palm Lane. You know, there are a bunch of.
Yeah, they are, they are coming back.
You know, lucky enough to have their kids here. Is that a bee or?
No, it's a beetle.
It's like me both.
Oh.
So Danny, so I, I think we should try to figure out where we wanna go with this. I mean, I, I think I'm, I'm hearing that we might be obligated to, to include this fair share. My concern is putting a number in there and then, that I, that I view as being totally unrealistic, and I think many probably would agree to that, that it is. But if we put a number, if we agree, do we have to really put that number into our housing chapter? And if we do put that number in, are we setting ourselves up for a lawsuit because there are circumstances which don't allow those units to be built?
Well, I think it's really important to get the word out that this is what objective people say is, should be in our future. And, you know, and put that out there, and then propose that maybe something more modest would make more sense here. Or, you know, to say, well, you know, we look at this area, could accommodate this many, and we look at that area, could accommodate that many, so in the short term, you know, our next zoning iteration, we're proposing that, you know, which is only, I don't know, how many percent of what they're recommending to, you know, the, for the regional fair share, but at least it's, you know, stepping toward it. I'm not, that, I, I think it's wrong to withhold that information from the general public if we know what it is. It should be a background piece, we don't have to endorse that number, in my view.
You mean the number that, that they've given us?
Yes, yes, but I think they should know, I think people in town should know.
Right, I think, Rich, to, to speak to the questions you asked, there, that, I, I agree, Vic, the Vicky, that number's out there, it's printed in the regional housing assessment, blah, blah, blah. We need to consider, we need to let the town know, and that actually speaks to one of the points that I have here. I don't think we're, I don't think we're liable for a lawsuit that, as Vicky says, they don't have any legal hold, these are aspirational numbers, these are numbers that by their model, well, I should think about this, Lebanon should think about that, Manchester. And so, we don't, we don't have an obligation there. But I think it's, it is useful to have a number out there, because if we really said, we need three hundred units by twenty forty, we're gonna choose, if we believed we would have, need three hundred units, that would have a very different effect on the kinds of changes that we'd think about. We said we would need fifteen units by twenty forty to pick the crazy alternative, that's a whole different set of considerations.
We don't have any legal obligations, in perspective, it would be very hard for somebody to.
Not quite, I mean.
It would be very hard for somebody to establish standing to.
So it's just, people should read RSA six seventy four fifty nine, which is in that white book that talks about the requirements for workforce housing.
Workforce housing, it's just.
But I, but I think that, you know, what we saw with the solar amendment was people feel a certain social obligation. And so it would be possible to present some small incremental changes that might loosen the reins and grease the wheels so that, you know, fifteen to twenty more housing units of some mix would be, you know, in the next ten years or five years, or I'm just making up numbers here.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, I mean, we can, we can figure out, I would wanna change it to allow that, but that doesn't mean it's gonna happen for this thing, and so.
You just have to provide the opportunity, not necessarily the.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's virtually impossible to predict what the opportunity is going to develop into.
Exactly.
I mean, it's virtually impossible.
Exactly.
So the whole idea, I mean, as you say, it, it's best to just call these aspirational and probably make a comment that we may only reach a fraction of this, but.
We create a space.
We will, or, or, but we believe we are providing an opportunity for growth.
Right.
And I, it seems to me nobody's gonna sue you.
No.
If, if that is your stated intention and, and that's the way you understand it. Because I don't see how anyone could know anymore. I mean, in Hanover, did you have a sense of, of what you were going to do, was going to wind up in, in terms of numbers of units?
Well, I mean, what, what was done was, there's, if you look at the chapter, I mean, they're talking about basically ditching the whole current zoning and, and doing something that's much more form-based. But one of the things that was done was like, you know, if you do workforce housing, you get double density automatically. And, you know, of course, where that would work would be where there's water and sewer, and, you know, basically more in the downtown, but, you know, that, that's already been voted in, and.
But it seems Hanover's totally different.
It's a different, it's a very different.
I mean, it's college, it's, I mean, it's not even the same.
And, you know, set a goal for, you know, accommodating ninety percent of the undergraduate student body on the campus, not in town.
But still, I mean, does that get you to seven hundred X versus three hundred?
Um, yeah, I mean, we were, we were counting units that the college was putting in, and, you know, that made a big dent.
Yeah, that's true.
And, and then the town itself is gonna be doing a workforce housing project on Greensboro Road. And, you know, neighbors are saying, oh, there's too many units, but that's a place where we could take advantage of the workforce housing, change that's already been made, so likely, you know, get twenty-four there. I mean, it's, you know, little, it's not seven hundred, but you get twenty-four here and then three hundred, you know, room, you know, or bed dorm, and, you know, you start building, so it's not gonna be one big thing at all.
But they're, they're doing the workforce housing out there because there's water and sewer, right?
Yes.
Once again, there's water and sewer.
Yep, yep, and a, a town-owned piece of property. So that's the other. That is being given to the developer for free.
So.
Zero, zero land cost. Yeah, I mean, so, you know, you're, yeah, there's a hundred thousand dollars immediately or more.
So we're looking at fifty-two by twenty thirty and ninety-eight by twenty forty, is that?
Those are those numbers.
Yeah, they're not, I would say they're there to be a, a yardstick. Is it ever gonna happen? We're, we don't do development, but what we do is like, say, that's acknowledging that there's a need. And, and part of it is internal and part of it is coming, you know, so that the business that you run or own can have employees to populate your business now and, you know, accommodate any growth that your business might have.
Right.
So.
See, I think that how they, I think how they came up with the numbers is they looked what the whole state needed. You know, they predicted what the whole state needed for housing, then they had to divide that up between all the towns. So then they looked at Lebanon and the bigger towns, and they said, well, how many maximum can these towns take? And then the ones that were left over, they had to divide up among all the small towns.
They didn't look at capacity at all, I mean, I think you got more if you had water and sewer, but.
Well, they, but, but you know what I mean, they, they looked at the whole state.
No, I think they did it by what the employers were. I mean, you know, that was, your fair share meant if you've got a lot of employers in your town like Lebanon, and they have a higher fair share.
But I think they still looked at the total for the state, and then they had to divide it up among all the towns in the state. And however they did that, you know.
Right.
You know, it came out, they had to make it come out.
And not only they did it evenly, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's what they did with the employment model, the regional employment model, and then they, they distributed across counties, which is like pretty crazy.
I mean, they had some pretty complex equations there, actually, for, for how they did it. But, so maybe the thing to do is to just decide, okay, what kinds of projects, you know.
Well, that's what we were working on, was like, kind of like the goals. And then how would we do it, you know, what are some ways that we could do that? And, you know, focusing development in the. And, you know, focusing development in the non-common area, you know. You know, like we said, looking at dimensional controls. Those are some of the ways, and we're not getting specific. But, you know, what we need to do is be able to get something kind of general, but with some ideas out to the public so we get some feedback.
But I'm just saying, before you get the dimensional controls, you have to be thinking, what kind of project am I gonna, what, what kind of project am I encouraging? And so you've gotta get in your head what you think is the appropriate scale and the appropriate target tenant, okay? And, and then think, once you, what, you gotta get idea of that. With ADUs, it's sort of simpler because they are what they are. You could still, you could add one more per, per property, but, you know, you, you can't do much more than that. And we already allow them. But with, with the, with the apartment building with six units in it of a certain size, then we have. Then we have a good idea of what we would have to do to the zoning in order to get somebody to build something like that. And make it feasible. That's, that's what I'm, that's, that's the easiest way for me to think about it, rather than just go looking at the dimensional controls. And say, well, if you tweak this, what will that do?
Thing is, is that we don't really have architectural controls, so we can't really say what it's gonna look like. All we can say is like, oh, it's gotta be, you know, a box like this, located on the lot like that. And, and then we're kind of at, you know, at the mercy of the developer. And you've seen what the styles are these days. I mean, they're all pretty similar with the kind of, you know, kind of plain. Siding that you get and the windows that you get.
But that's just because they're trying to do them as cheaply as possible.
Well, I mean, that.
Absolutely cheapest way to do it.
Most people are, but we're not gonna get twelve over twelve windows, and we can't control that. So we're, you know, in terms of what does it look like, even if they show you a very pretty picture, it's not necessarily what's gonna get built.
I went to a webinar last Thursday from the plan folks.
By New Hampshire?
No. Planning Lushes at noon.
Oh, the webinars, yeah.
The Thursday webinars, and they talked about. Folks in Keene actually talked about their, they called it a cottage court overlay. And they, they looked at various ways that they could put a lot of density, a lot of intense development into a relatively small lot. And yet have it come out looking, addressing the very concerns you have. I could, I could, I know it got recorded. I could, I could send it to, to David and Rich and you could see it. That was kind of interesting. They were getting nine, around nine units into an acre and a half.
But does Keen have water and sewer?
Yes.
They do have water and sewer, and so, you know, I. I don't know, you might have to have two acres. You know, nine units is not that awful many.
You have to count on, count bedrooms and things, you know.
Right, exactly, but. So the, that's, that's something to address your concern if, if we give people the freedom to do it. If we don't give them the freedom to do anything, I promise they're not gonna develop anything. And so. I don't, I, I'm not sure what the trade-off is, and maybe this is an important question to ask the people in town. Would you rather have enough housing for your kids, for your employees, for whatever? Or would you rather have the town look really gorgeous? I mean.
I don't think it's either of us.
Well, it isn't, but.
I wouldn't.
Okay, but it was sounding like you were saying that, and so.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it that way. Well, you know, let's, I mean, we, we've done visual preference surveys. We did it for the last master plan here, and we did something like that in Hanover. And it would be kind of interesting if we were, I mean, pick a property that we think are, you know, is likely to get developed and would be a good one to develop. Well, how about the Pond View? And, you know, different kinds of styles of, you know, putting the same number of units or twice the number of units there. And, you know, how do, how does that feel to you, you know? And get a sense about how people feel about the looks of different things that are a little bit bigger size than they're used to.
It would be hard for people to be unhappy with eighty-five Dartmouth College Highway, wouldn't you think?
I mean, that's. Right, they're all antique caves.
I mean, but you could pretend to be antique.
But how many units are actually there?
Twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Housing units?
Yeah. Some of them are duplexes, and some of them are triplexes, and some are single, so, yeah.
Are there really twenty-two units there?
Yeah, there might be a couple, I mean.
I mean, Randy's.
There's all very much office to say so.
There's none in that building. The old D'Artagnan's has like three or four of these, right? And most of them have several.
There's a lot in town that's gonna be primed when Elizabeth Brandon sells her lot. I mean, that's a double lot right there.
I mean, does it make sense to talk to people that own that Pond View and say, you know?
They've been here.
But I mean, update that conversation with something like, gee, what kind of thing might entice you to take on a project like this? What do you think the barriers of that are?
Well, I think that they're, they're in a position where they're more into property management, and they're not developers themselves. And so then they, I'm sure, saw the twenty-three point five million dollar sale to Joel Lynn on West Wheelock Street in Hanover to the college. And they're thick, 'cause they own three buildings there, and it's like, well, cha-ching, cha-ching, you know?
Is, is Pond View three buildings?
No, 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 they own down at West Wheelock, they're gonna sell that to the college, I'm sure, or some other developer.
On the west side, right?
No.
I mean, on the south side, the other side.
South side, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I lived in one of those.
Oh.
Is it as bad inside as it looks out on the outside?
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, well, it just.
I think.
So, so they're not, so they're, it wouldn't be fruitful to talk to them.
They, they, what would be really great is for us to find a workforce housing developer who we try to find financial backing for, to go talk with them. And to secure that property and have it built. I mean, that's the best we could do.
If they get a reasonable price for it, they'd be happy to get rid of it because they complain bitterly about it being one of the outliers. And every time they have to send mowing crews, plowing people, maintenance people, it's, you know, takes much longer for the crew to get out there and work. And get back than all their other properties.
Years back, years back then, they, I forget how many years ago it was that we were all talking about this, and they, at that point, I think they really wanted to sell it. But they wanted more for it than anybody was willing to give, so they didn't sell it. But they would sell it a minute if it was at a price.
And we looked at plans too for replacing the, that building and then putting some more development behind. Because there's a big cleared area kind of out of view back in there.
I think that's sixty acres, is that right, David?
So who's the affordable housing developer that's working, or who are they that are working in Hanover?
Twin Pines, and there's also another one, Evermore.
So should we talk to them?
We've had Twin Pines come out and talk about Brett's building where Fremont students used to be, and.
You told me what the conclusion was, but I just don't know.
The conclusion was that they couldn't get enough units on it to make it work.
Who'd they talk to when they did that?
Well, it was the planning board at that point, I think maybe John or.
Heard before I was on there.
No, no, it wasn't before, this is only a couple of years ago.
Wait, how many units did they wanna put on it then to make it work?
I don't remember.
Was it like ten or?
So, maybe.
Our zoning wasn't in the way, though, it was causing problems and, you know, they were gonna have to segment buildings and stuff.
Footprint.
Make it, I don't know what it was, but.
Footprint, lock coverage.
Well, they had the, they have the building there, do you, I, do you remember that? Because you must have been involved.
I don't, I don't remember a whole lot about it.
Well, who was talking to them about it?
I don't remember, I remember coming in the planning board.
They, they.
Twin Pines gave a plan.
Twin Pines came, but not to the planning board, no. Purcell had Jay Barrett, and we were dealing with this plan down there, but the Twin Pines never.
Was it during one of the housing forums back when the master plan was redone?
Well, what the, Tim was on the board then.
Yeah, I think it was when the master plan was being redone.
But it was somebody else who was like meeting with them, not the planning board, and I'm not sure who it was.
Yeah, I don't know either, but.
I don't think it was, I don't know who else it would have been, but maybe it was select board members or something.
Yeah, I don't.
So, well, it's history now, I don't think it's.
Yeah, it is, it is, but there was potential there.
Right, I'd like to follow up on that. I think it's really interesting to have Twin Pines come and tell us not about a specific person, but what would interest them, you know?
Well, how about free land? The town would put in utilities.
But what else, I mean.
But they might, they might also say there's nothing that could interest us.
And that.
Right now, they're, they're so busy, I mean, that was another thing is that, I guess, it was, I think it was, oh, could Earl was talking with them, that's who it was.
Oh, was it Earl?
It was Earl, because, yeah, Earl talked with them.
When he owned the building.
When he owned the building, so it was before he sold it to Brett, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but, I mean, okay, so if you, if you didn't have a mountain of stuff already on your desk. What are the parameters of, of something that would, would help, be interesting to you? How much land, what kinds of zoning rules, what kinds of opportunities? You know, obviously, free land, there's lots of sweeteners that might be there. But just to understand. Their sense of economics, I mean, how much does it cost to do this kind of stuff? And how could it get defrayed and, and all these things? And, and to your point, what, what zoning things would stand in their way? That, that's, that would be really important for us to hear.
Well, I don't think they could, unless you have a specific site, they're not gonna be able to say what zoning things stand in the way at all. And the, I know that they're so backed up that they probably wouldn't even like come here. Because unless we had a piece of property that we could say, well, what about this?
Well, are there other people then that know about these things? Developers, consultants?
Well, it's, it's, I mean, we, we can suss that, I mean, we can say that, so we don't need, we, what we need is a piece of property that we could offer up. And say, how do we get as many workforce housing units on here as would, you know, be sustainably placed? Something like that, and, you know, and then it would be, I, it would be really nice if we had that kind of situation. Because then they, the whole general thing is like, it's just a waste of their time.
But we don't, we don't have any property out there.
The town doesn't, no, no, I mean.
So we have no property, like, that we could append to the commercial district or to the con?
Well, the town owns conservation land and then, you know, municipal like here and cemeteries and, you know.
We're dying here, sorry.
No, 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 but, you know.
You've got two stories on the town office.
Very politically improper to give your cemetery over.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Didn't they do that in Poltergeist or something?
Yeah, I was just.
To workout.
Cemetery trustees just bought new software for mapping it, so they'd be all over our case too.
Well, I mean, you can figure how many dollars per square foot, I haven't heard recently. I mean, like, if you're building a house now, a halfway decent house, I think it's close to four hundred dollars a square foot.
Well, what did they say for that place down in White River?
I don't know.
We could probably, you know, per unit price, it's probably somewhere, or you could probably call the, you know, secretarial and ask, you know, what did that cost?
Well, I think Rich just said it was four, four hundred thousand.
Four, four car units, but, you know, are they thousand square foot units?
Maybe.
I don't know. No, they're bigger?
No, they're smaller.
They're smaller?
Yeah, I mean, we, the ones they built in Hanover.
They're so small.
It's like six hundred square feet, that kind of thing, you know, really small.
Is that by the Black Center?
Yes, yeah.
You have to go outside to take your mind.
We're getting into daddy humor, I think we should start.
How can we move this forward, I guess? I mean, we've had some discussion about having a forum in September-ish, and that's only two months away.
Right, but we had some homework, I think, at one point as far as coming up with ideas about things we could change maybe, which we haven't done that yet.
Well, I don't think we wanna throw those things out to the public. Because I think what we need to do is find out what their vision and goals are. And then we can say, oh, well, that could be done by changing this or that. I, I, you know, it's almost like a waste of our time to talk about how we could change the zoning. I mean, we can change it any way you want.
So, it was you, Vicki, how would you couch that question? What are your goals?
Well, we worked on the whole thing of, you know, goals and strategies.
Oh, okay.
And I would say, well, here's some goals and strategies, how do you feel about them and, you know?
I think we should post that, post that to the lister and say, come, come to our meeting.
Well, we should, they could like put it out there so that they can look at it, and then we just need to figure out how we're going to receive input. And how we're going to process that. I mean, if three people grab you at post office and say, this is all terrible, it's one thing. If somebody, three people show up here and talk, you know, is that more important or is that the same? So we need to like figure out how we're gonna value the input that we get.
Yeah, 'cause you did all these calls.
Yeah, we all did, we all went there.
So the, the things in red, though, those are things that we wanted to suss out a little bit more, is that why?
Or not, not forget. I don't think we need to think about them when we throw these out to the public. You know, the ideas, the goals and the strategies, but I didn't wanna lose the conversation that we had.
Might be, the latest news might, may not for me.
Yeah, that's what.
That's what, that's how they come for a forum.
So, I mean, and the Xs were there, and Rich has followed up, well, what should we put in there for the X? And we could say, or, you know, rather a statement about fair share housing, people say this. And we think that some percentage of that is more accurate. What percentage do you think is, is the right amount? I mean, just.
I just haven't sensed that this is not on anybody, not many people in town have given this one iota of thought.
How can you not, though? It's in the news that every town's having the same problem.
People are busy, I mean, it's, it's why half, I mean, half the people are not engaged in, you know, the presidential base, you can see.
Right.
But I think that people know that there's a housing shortage certainly, as you say, but I don't think they think about it in a law, as far as law perspective. You know, they don't think that we need, you know, housing here.
Well, it's because they're already here.
Right, I got a house. And. People don't necessarily understand the ramifications of. Other people not being able to find houses.
Right.
How long do you have to wait for an appointment at the medical center? When will you came in?
Actually depends.
Well, yeah, I mean, so, I mean, it's not a useful story, I won't tell it. But. Restaurants are closing in town or are.
They don't have staff.
You know, they don't have staff. It's like, okay. So, how, you know, and this begins to speak to the questions that I sent to, to Rich earlier. One, first one was, if any members of the public here, we should invite them to tell us what's on their mind. You know, maybe they're here because they have an application, but just as a matter of course, we should do that. Second, though, is how do we, you know, like I said, I'm worried that we're missing an opportunity to get preliminary feedback from people in town. And this is exactly what we're edging right up to. What, what can we say now to get people to start to think about this?
Well, we need to throw something to them because they don't wanna think about it. So if we can condense it, so we're on one page, you know, and then tell us, and that's, that's what we need to do. Because they're too busy to be thinking about housing policy. And, and we need them to give us their feedback on these ideas and.
Yeah, you asked me to try and find a video, I'd seen one really good video.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and I couldn't find. Yeah, and I couldn't find it.
Oh, what was it?
No, it was something that I, I.
It's on YouTube, I think.
I picked a link up off of either the, either the Keys to the City or the other one, and I looked at it, I watched it, it was twenty minute video, but it pretty much went over the whole idea of, of, geez, you're going to have to confront these balances, you know? It's gonna, it's gonna change your town in some way, uh, but on the other hand, it has to happen.
Yeah.
Uh, because, you know, otherwise, we're not gonna have anybody to do, you know, to, to wait the tables or cook the meals in our restaurants and so on.
Cut your yard.
And, or cut your yard, exactly.
I can't believe how many people drive by my house, there's so many people that have yard workers, um, it's un- unbelievable.
Yeah, there's a bunch of people that do it.
Up, up, well, and they go up the hill, and, you know, so a bunch of houses up above me.
The mansions on the hill.
Anyway, it was, it was a good video, I, I'm, I'm still looking for, I've been through probably twelve or so, and.
To look in your browser history, that, that would be the first thing I'd try to do. So, like, look for NHHFA or, you know.
Was it Keys to the Valley, 'cause they did a lot, you know, Kevin Geiger, the Turner's people, they were, you know, visioning, like, how would it change, and there was, like, the view of the town now, and then they used, you know, an artist to put in a couple more, you know, buildings there.
Beautiful, nice.
Right, yeah, 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 and, and I thought that was pretty effective, because you didn't actually see them at first, um.
Well, they use that same diagram, which I've seen in a number of different ones, where it's basically at one street.
Yep.
And, and it's got, uh, the, on the far left, it's got a, a lot with an accessory dwelling, you know, as being the, you know, the base case.
Right.
And then it goes into, you know, duplexes.
Oh, that's the missing middle.
Quadruplexes, and then finally, at the other end, it's got a, you know, apartment building with forty or fifty units in it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then it's, that's the missing middle thing.
Right.
You know, we, most people have the accessory dwelling units, and, um, and you can find the apartments in the cities, but it's, it's the stuff in the middle that you have to do, and, and so it, it's sort of, that was one of the points that it makes. The other point it makes is that, is that you need, you need people to, um, work in your, in the industries that are the economic power for your town.
Right, right.
And the other one was that the zoning was all started at a time when, when everybody wanted to protect their property values, and, and that's, and unfortunately, it's just too effective, and so all of it creates a stalemate, and, um, and then it goes over nimbyism and, and, you know, all of the usual sentiments, uh, so I thought it was a good video.
So I wonder if Opticos did that, 'cause they're the missing middle people, um, it sounds like it goes beyond what they do, though.
Opticos?
Opticos is the company who owns the missing middle, um, and that, that graphic that you were thinking of.
Okay.
But I know that a lot of communities have engaged them, and then, so, and what you're talking about is the bigger housing story, where you get into zoning and you get into the fact that you don't have enough people, um, you know.
Which I thought was okay, simply because, you know, if people understand it at that level.
Right.
Then they're gonna be able to sort of extrapolate down to where we are.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but it was, you know, it sort of was very sympathetic about.
Opticos did that? Yes, yes, and they, uh, if you go to the town of Hanover website, 'cause Opticos did work with Hanover, and, um, there is either a slide deck or a video
Oh, maybe that's where.
of Opticos, you know, from, you know, in the Hanover planning and zoning links.
For your minutes.
So.
O, O P T I C O S.
Yep.
O P.
Yep, and then our housing chapter is based on that missing middle analysis, 'cause they actually looked at the costs of development in that, and, um, you know, didn't look good, but, and, I don't know, they're, they're, they were helping Hanover also come up with a zoning scheme that would be way different, and based on kind of form-based, which is that, you know, we're more interested in the massing and what the feeling is on the street and all that, not the use, and, um, using that as a, um, way of, um, organizing the housing in the downtown.
Yeah, I did see one also that went over a lot of different, the, the story of a lot of different communities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think some were in Massachusetts, uh, I think Sandwich was one of them. Um, and, um, and that's where I got the, you know, the, this notion that, um, that if somebody likes the feel of the way it is, then you can adjust the zoning to make more of that.
Yep.
Um, and then you can, and then it's much more palatable, uh, in terms of introducing the change, because that's what they did, and they, you know, they're developing, you know, blocks, new blocks.
Yep.
Uh, of, of houses that are spaced about the same, have a sort of the same look, um, and, um, and then there are places where they have pre-approved house designs, things like that, where, and they're a little bit cheaper, 'cause they get, I guess, they have a supply chain.
Pre-approved house design, yeah, you don't need an architect to do the design.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and there's, presumably, there's a, a supply chain for a certain limited number of them, I think, yeah, they're doing that in Lebanon, I think.
Well, there's, um, down in Charleston, uh, south of Charlestown, Walpole, community housing, they do, um, kind of prefabricated kinds of poems, and it can be economically produced.
Yeah, unity is one, they're, they're actually not that economical, I looked at them.
Well.
Yeah, they used to be a lot cheaper, and, you know, things caught up with them, um, like, were, yes.
That's how they were.
Yeah, Frank would write, I'd have the same problem.
Yeah, but that was a different decade, um, yeah, so, how do we move this forward?
I think that we might wanna think about setting a goal for our next meeting to have this in some form, or something to send to the List Serve and just start to circulate, in a low, in a low-key way, not to get anything except people interested.
So the red would be there.
The red would not be here, but we would, I would say we would not put too many things in it that would make people say, no, that's terrible, we want them to say, oh, that's interesting, let's see what we can do, I don't care.
Some questions, you mean, you mean questions, or, or just statements?
Well, I, I think, the, the goal, the, the goals with, um, you know, you can have a goal, and then you could say, have a question associated with the goal, that would, would elicit, you know, a positive response, and saying, perhaps not filling out the XX housing units immediately.
Well, no, but to ask people what they thought, and given what they think, we could say there are X number of housing units in line now.
Right.
And they, you know, they, you know, regional experts say, you know, our fair share is needing to add this much, what do you think is the right amount?
And the problem is, you have to explain a little bit more about, flesh out what fair share means.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I think you do with attainable and affordable housing in this.
You'll need to just write some sort of intro to explain what it is you're, you're sending people out, and.
Why are you bothering me?
Well, yeah, you know, because, you know, yes, I'll put it out, I could put it out on List Serve, but it's gonna go on the website.
Oh, absolutely.
So, and then point back to the website, say, here's a, a link, go see it, um, but, you know, putting something out there that explains what the board is doing, why the board is doing this, and here are the goals, and please write feedback, and something.
Is this a Survey Monkey thing, do we, do you own that?
No, no, I think, I think we want to be very qualitative at this point.
So we're gonna get handwritten responses?
So, I think you, you don't even do that, you just, you know, tell people that that's what the board is working on, and if you wanna respond, you know, you can send stuff to me, I'll forward it to the board, or.
We would love to hear it.
Or come to.
We could come to meetings.
I think more importantly, trying to engage people to come to the meetings.
So this will be List Serve only?
No, no, you'd be on the website, and then List Serve would be, List Serve is not a.
Good.
Not official.
Or not official, so.
Not official, but I'll tell you, how many times do you go to the line website, I mean, personally, I haven't been there.
I know they're there.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So many people don't use the website, I mean, I.
Which is really combat, because there's a lot of information.
Don't use the List Serve, I mean, they just say, I'm done with it, you know, they don't even look at it anymore.
The witch don't look at what?
The List Serve, they just, you know, there's so much stuff on there that they just delete it all, they don't even look at it.
Well, I find this hilarious, somebody will say, I have such and such to give away, and then two days later says, I'm looking for such and such, and you're kind of like.
Well, they probably got the idea that I, that they wanted it, or they didn't get, get it through.
Yeah, they were, they didn't answer in two seconds.
Right, right, so they still want one.
But I guess all I'm saying is, I think the List Serve is not a really great place to get a lot of people.
No, but you, you, it's, it's one of the avenues, and so it's definitely one that's.
Totally an avenue.
Yep, so, you put it on the, the website, and then you, um, put a message out on List Serve saying, go look at the website, yeah.
And I had heard we've got a little bit of money for, uh, like, mailing or whatever.
No, I think we have to ask the select board.
I know, but they basically said.
Well, I, I, I'd almost like not to do all the work to make this mailing, I think when we have something a little more definitive, that's the thing we wanna hit people with the mailing.
I understand, but I, I think we want their preliminary responses, and we should work to get those first, so that it's not like, huh, you know, like, oh, yeah, we're getting it right, right, yeah.
What are you doing, what are you guys doing over there, yeah?
And unless we did.
I don't know that that's really necessary, I mean, I, I, I think if we get something out now, I mean, we're gonna get people who are interested in it.
Well, how are you gonna get it out, that's.
Yeah.
It, I think the List Serve and the, and the website.
Well, you know, and I think we can.
That's only for people that have computers, or.
But we can engage different groups, too, we can engage CCL.
Everybody's got a computer, I mean, you know.
A lot of people don't use computers, and don't, I would not, guess what, I do read List Serve, but if I didn't, I would not find it on our town website, 'cause I go there like once a year.
I mean, I think most people.
Register my car, or something like that, but, you know, or to find the phone number for something, but, yeah, I don't go there, so.
So are there other ways to engage people, to send it to CCL, to the, to the churches, to, you know, dragoon somebody on the those guys list?
But so, folks de la Cruz gets two copies, one at her home and one, you know, at work.
But you send it to CCL, they'll put it out on List Serve.
Well, and.
That's exactly right, yeah, that's all they do.
But, so that may not be a good thing, you could, you know, you could dragoon those guys, um, and certainly I can send it out to the those guys list. I happen to know somebody that, that's in the utility club, are there other groups, the PTA? Would you be willing to send this out to, to people, I mean, we can be creative about that, to hit different constituencies, um, I guess.
I know that, um, the Line Foundation is having a, uh, you know, a community event.
August.
August twenty fourth.
We're putting up a tent.
Yes, you are.
You knew everything was happening.
Yeah, you probably got the check that I just gave to Alicia, so.
Oh, we didn't hear back from Alicia yet, Frank just wrote back to her and said, are you serious? Were you serious?
Yeah, 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 'cause I, I had, she just got a check.
Okay.
Yeah, she is serious, two hundred dollars, two hundred's coming on the twenty fourth, if you understand, yeah, 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 it's serious.
Well, Frank hadn't heard back from her.
Oh, okay.
Um, so let's, let's say each of us spend like half an hour marking this up before the next meeting.
Well, why don't I send everybody a word, or David can send everybody.
Yeah, I mean, whatever.
That's gonna be a problem. David's leaving, I'm off on vacation tomorrow, and I won't be back till the eighth.
Does this exist as a, um.
Word document.
It does.
Yeah, so everybody should have a copy of the word document, so I'll send it out to everybody, and, um, then.
Is that okay?
Yeah, but as long as, again, don't send anything back, just, I would.
Yeah, 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 I'll, and I'll, I'll take out the red, so all you have is black.
No, leave.
No, leave it there.
Leave it red.
It's a good poem.
Because we can always take it out.
Okay, so.
It's a good poem.
Should we be, should we be then, the black would kind of go out, and then should we be thinking about a question that would go with each one of the goals or strategies?
Yes.
That people would respond to, so that's our homework, is to write a, a relevant question to go with each of the black statements.
And, and a.
Each of the goals.
And a paragraph, and a paragraph of explanation.
Well, a cover letter.
Exactly.
Yeah, cover letter, okay, and, and then, so David's gonna be gone, so that means that, um, we send all of our submissions back to David if, when he gets back?
Oh, if you send it, I mean, anytime, it'll just accumulate in my inbox.
When are you coming back?
The eighth.
The eighth, oh.
I'm only gone a week.
Okay, but is, when's our next meeting?
I mean, it is on the eleventh.
So it'll be the following week.
Okay, so does that give you time to turn those things around?
Probably not, but we'll try.
Where are you going?
Nowhere.
Oh, stay here.
Actually, I'm going down to Portsmouth for, uh, overnight, and just to play down around in Portsmouth, 'cause I've been there for a lot of years.
All right, well, I know that I'm not gonna be here on the eleventh, so you all carry on, but I'll submit all my stuff to David.
So, the homework, let, let me just get clarity on the homework, we're gonna, each of the goals has a question, not so much each of the strategies?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we're only throwing the goals out.
Right, right.
So seven, seven questions.
But chances are, we'll leave the strategies in the document.
Yes.
Um, it's just a.
Yes. Do we're saying that?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we may need to put questions with the strategies, 'cause the strategies really are more, I mean, it's the strategies that we want to have a gut feeling about, right?
I, uh, yes, we, we will need that, but I, I think just getting people tuned up to start thinking about.
Or maybe a question that refers to the goal and the strategy as a backing.
Well, that's interesting, the question is, you know, we could increase housing stock by, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, all right, I think I second that.
And then, and then we want thoughts on a, on a cover letter to solicit input from, uh, the public.
Right.
And I think we should, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes, I have a question. Yes.
I have one question.
I second that.
Yeah. You can ask a question, Tim.
I see their after, I look, I, when I was looking at that thing you sent, the, I don't even remember what it was, about the, um, that you sent out for us to, maybe you could look at.
YouTube videos?
Yeah, it's a YouTube video, okay, I looked at most, I mean, it's, I don't have time, so there was, there was something in there, and maybe I have this moment, it said, it said if the zoning amendment, if a zoning amendment affects one hundred people or more, then you, they have to be notified. You know what that mean, I didn't.
Yeah, it's a, um, it's actually.
I'd have to do it.
I've had to do it also, but it's actually, if it affects, um, I think it's a hundred people or less.
In the town?
Yes.
Oh, it's, oh, it's less, I thought it said more.
No, I believe it's less, so when, when the, um, there was a proposal to expand the, uh, commercial district a few years back, it was a petition amendment, but it's still counted, I had to send letters to all the people who were affected by that, uh, ordinance change.
Like the butters and.
Yeah, anybody who was affected by it, so, because there were less than.
Because there were less than a hundred, I, I'm, yeah, I thought someone said more.
So you're trying to make sure that you're not doing spot zoning?
Right, well, letting, you know, because it's such a small group of people, you need to make sure they're well aware of.
Great.
So.
Okay, all right, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm with you exactly.
Let's go watch the old, old people, people that are way older than any of us here.
And it is officially ten oh three. Okay, I will open this meeting at ten oh three, and number one on our agenda, Russell, do you have time to wait till after the public hearing of the two ordinances, and then if I brought in the maps and we can walk through everything?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, so we have public comment, do we have public comment from those in the room at this time?
Yes, I do, um, uh, I guess the question I'll, first I'll ask is, what's the problem that both of these ordinances are intended to solve, so maybe that'd be a great way to open this discussion.
Okay, um, I will answer that when we. Okay, um, I will answer that when we open the public hearing.
Oh, okay, so this is just public comment?
This is public comment.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, uh, and I am also intrigued about the, uh, RFP for revaluation.
Okay.
Is that something that's available for people to read yet?
I think it's still a draft, but.
Well, it's like a rough, rough draft, but we have questions to answer today first.
All right.
Okay, let us discuss it first and then I, I certainly would be in favor of it being distributed.
Yes. Will there be an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions as that comes up in the agenda?
Usually we do that unless we, we have an eleven thirty where we have to be at a physical location.
Okay.
But if we have time, we want to entertain questions. We may not have the answers, but.
Okay, good. So I should wait, hold the questions till the?
I will hold those questions too. Thank you. Okay.
I think Hebe Quinlan has one.
Okay, Hebe?
I suppose maybe not.
Maybe not. Silence?
We can't hear anything.
I didn't, I didn't want you to determine.
I'm like, what is going on here?
Okay.
The TV was turned up to ninety and I turned it down to ten, so.
It's been missing, but.
Can you hear now, James?
Or Hebe?
Or anyone here? How about now?
Here we go.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Jordan. Once again. If people would leave my computer alone.
Right.
It's the elves at night. Okay, James or Hebe, do you have a public comment?
Hebe's unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, I'm just, uh, here because I wanted to follow up with, uh, the CBCNH cost sharing agreement and, uh, it wasn't completed. I had sent to, or I don't know if you got the message, Andrew Hatch, uh, sent to Tina that, that, um, there are a couple of things that were left out, uh, of the signing. So we need to follow up with that. I don't know, uh.
Did you get a copy of that email?
I had, I had the email. Yes, I had the email. I just haven't even looked at it yet, cause it's been crazy busy.
Okay, so we will have to have a look at that and take it up as soon as we can, but.
Well, you've already signed the document. I think there's just places that I need to fill in, so.
Oh, okay.
I'll look at it.
Yeah, there's a clerk at the station in the port also need to, um, assign, uh, an officer.
I think we decided we were not going to do that. Um, okay. Very good. We will have to take that up, uh, when we can get to that. I'm glad they read it and we've got the email and we will follow up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Phil?
I have information, uh, from the trustee, the trust funds. We have over sixty-seven thousand dollars in the trust fund towards real estate reappraisal. So that, that trust fund is, uh, is there to help support that effort.
Toward the townwide appraisal?
Right. And, and second, um, I don't know if there's a list of companies or appraisers or people who do these kind of townwide reassessments and any way to check out their reputations or et cetera. But if there was something that we could look at, um, that would be good.
I can send you the list that the DRA sends out.
Super, that'd be great.
Of people they.
Thank you.
Encourage you to use.
Okay, Dina will send that to you. Anyone else? Okay, we've got five whole minutes to do a short amount of work and then we will open the public hearing. So let's take up the May thirtieth public meeting minutes.
No, I'm moving.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, David. Any changes since you received them and reviewed the draft or?
I didn't have anything.
Okay.
Ben, I.
All those in favor, Ben, I?
David, I.
David and Judy, I. They are approved. And next we have a manifest in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Did everyone have a chance to review that?
I did.
No, I'm moving. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Ben, I.
David, I.
And Judy, I. Excellent.
We spent a lot of money, but six hundred thousand went to the school.
Yeah, that's almost all the school.
I did not have a chance to separate those two out, so.
The school is like five, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred or something. I think close to that.
Okay. And I saw there was a lot of library there too.
Yeah.
Um, all right. So now we come to, do we have, we have five more minutes. Um, let's review and approve the federal excess property cooperative agreement for the generator that the forest fire department already has.
Hopefully you'll approve it, but, no, you've already signed this once.
Okay.
When we got it. So now it's my understanding it's a yearly.
Oh, we renew yearly?
A yearly thing when the forest fire war, or every two years when the forest fire wardens are, um, appointed. They have you sign that if you have any of their.
Property?
Property, which.
And we just appointed at the last minute, I believe, the forest fire warden and deputy warden.
Right, so that, and it came with that, but I didn't realize, cause I knew you'd already signed it. So I just didn't bring it to the last meeting.
Okay.
Does that continue indefinitely or like twenty-five years from now, we're still going to be signing this agreement every couple of?
Every two years, I guess so. Promising to keep the insurance on it and take care of it and.
I'll move it.
Uh, okay, thank you, Ben and David. All those in favor, say aye.
Ben, I.
David, I.
And Judy, I. Some of this stuff is just crazy. Um, well. Uh, I'm going to, thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, mayor, I could be the mayor.
For a day.
For a minute.
My father was once mayor of Lebanon.
Oh.
Many, many, many years ago.
I think that was a fun job.
Yeah, at the same time he was the delinquency officer. That was even more funny.
What a combo, ew.
Who was that?
My dad.
Oh.
He was, um, long before they had the CCBA, when they had the old CCBA. He was the director of the CCBA. Yeah, he's the one that hired Pat Walsh. His bat name rings a bell.
Oh, yeah, I remember him pulling towels over his shoulders, trying to rip them, ah.
Anyway, so that was a little trip down memory lane. Um, we have now two more minutes to go. Sean, do you have any quick updates for us for two minutes? A story to tell?
No.
Ben? How about those bears?
Vermont tax.
Oh, let's do the Vermont tax. Thank you.
Everybody's read the attached one, right?
We, we received, uh, we had this at the last meeting. We received an email from a letter received by our payroll processing company that starting, I can't remember, it's June first or July first? I guess July first. The town of Line would have to withhold funds from any Vermont employees to pay for their childcare program in Vermont. I made a phone call because it didn't seem right to me that one state could require another state to withhold broadly. So I got a response that no, Line did not have to do this, the state, we're New Hampshire state, even though we have Vermont employees. It was a suggestion here of the board that we should probably have gotten that in writing, which I, I didn't think about at the time. So Dina actually emailed them and asked them to email back, so we have it in writing. And the email Dina received confirmed that we do not have to do withholding on our Vermont employees for the Vermont program.
Only if they do a job for us in Vermont.
Okay, they better not.
That's what I thought, but, you know.
So.
I thought that was interesting.
Apparently we are kosher to not have to do that.
Right.
Great. Thank you, Dina. That was good. And we are now at ten fifteen and we are going to open the public hearing. And we have two proposed new ordinances to put before the public. We have, uh, Scott is here. He will give us a little brief about the yard debris or snow in the roadway. And Sean is here and he will give us a little brief about open containers and consumption of alcohol being proposed to be prohibited, I believe, on town properties. Um, and so Scott, you are kind of first, if you would like to just give us a two-second introduction to prohibiting placing snow or yard debris in the roadway.
Um, placing the yard debris in the roadway makes it difficult. We can't grade it. Um, so then we have to take, end up taking the leaf blower and blowing it back, um, where it came from.
And the snow?
And that just takes a personal way to do something else.
From the other job, and the snow?
And the snow, I personally don't have a problem if they push it across the road. It's when they push it across the road and do not clean it up and they leave. You know, snow, I mean, it's a hazard. It's, it's not okay. It freezes and.
Has potential for accidents or other, okay?
And then.
I've seen yard debris in the ditches and if you had a big rainstorm with the yard debris in the ditches, then you have a washout, greater expenses.
Well, that's, that's the other thing that people oftentimes don't realize is that when they put things out into the road or into the ditch line, all they're doing is diverting everything into the road, which then does exactly what Ben just said. Causes the road to wash away and then we have a bigger issue. And the same thing happens in the wintertime, you know, you leave those snowbanks with these weird plow marks and snow. And then if it rains, well, the water's going to fall over where that ice is already frozen. And, um, and then we have bigger problems than we should have.
And do we not have something presently about the snow being plowed across the roadways or is that state or?
We have a little mention in the winter.
There is something in there.
Okay, so this is just a slight expansion.
I mean, I'm not gonna go after somebody cause they push snow across the road. Um, I apologize. I know how it, I know how it is. Sometimes you have no choice. But clean it up. I mean, it's a big difference, I mean.
No, the reality is these ordinances bring attention to the problem. It's not likely anybody's gonna be fined a hundred dollars. But it's good to have people knowledgeable that there are problems.
Just for instance, the last two big snowstorms that we got, there were a lot of people that pushed snow across the road. And what they don't realize is that all of the stone and gravel from those driveways are now in our public way. And there were some pretty large piles of hard pack and crushed stone dumped all over our asphalt roads. Um, and then it, that causes a hazard as well.
Loose gravel and. Okay, I appreciate that, Scott, for the explanation. And we have public with us and we have a couple of people, I think, on Zoom. Anyone here in the audience?
Yeah, I'm just curious. So people actually do this a lot? I mean.
This, yeah.
Every snowstorm or every, yeah, okay.
But the yard debris this year has probably been a work.
Excellent. All right, okay, so.
Well, yeah, a mild winter like this, there's a lot of dirt that gets plowed.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I know. Yeah, okay, so.
I mean, it's not intentional, I mean.
Well, and, and when you say clean it up, so don't push your yard waste into the, into the ditch, cause that's gonna just screw things up. But, uh, if you do push it across the road, just push all of it across the road. So that the, the way is substantially clear.
All yard waste, some people just think that's a place to put it.
That's a great place to put it. It's bad. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I mean, we never had the opportunity, cause we didn't have the big blowers to blow the stuff up.
Right, right.
Works great.
But even so.
You give it to us, we give it to you.
Find a good place anyway.
Russell, any comments? Nope. Um, Hebe or James or anyone that's Jan's on? Jan, okay.
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, very good. Well, on to our probably slightly more controversial proposal. Sean, would you like to introduce the, um, the town ordinance prohibiting open containers of alcoholic beverages or liquor in certain public places? And prohibiting the consumption of alcoholic beverages or liquor in certain public places.
Uh, yeah, you know, I would just say that this, uh, this ordinance was brought about, um, for, you know, several reasons. Number one, um, most towns and cities across the state of New Hampshire have this very same ordinance. Um, you know, um, public drinking leads to public intoxication, which leads to public fighting and all kinds of other things. And I wish I had the, um, I wish I had the two videos from two separate Hanover melee's over the last couple of months where they had twenty to thirty people, uh, in a large brawl, um, in a couple of the parking lots. You know, one of those stemmed from an incident that occurred in one of the establishments in Hanover. But the other one, uh, they presume came from, uh, you know, a bunch of people that had been consuming alcohol in different places and then it ends up, you're fighting outside and, you know. And honestly, I, I mean, I think that our public properties and, well, our town properties and places where we, um, don't want people to consume alcohol are, are legitimate in that, you know, if people are drinking alcohol, whilst just for instance, the new proposed, um, selling of alcohol to Dartmouth Skiway. If they're drinking alcohol inside the building, that's perfectly fine. But when they're outside in the, and even though the Dartmouth Skiway owns the skiway, parking lot is public and it is considered a way because it is used and maintained for the public. So it's a public place. Over the last at least month, um, Chase Beach has been absolutely littered with alcohol containers. People just throw them all over the grass when they're done drinking them, either in the parking lot or on the beach or whatever they're doing. Even though there are signs saying no alcohol on Chase Beach, you can go down to the boat landing and there's alcohol containers all the time. Honestly, I think that for people to be consuming alcohol on our town common, our beaches, our playing fields, any of those things.
And our road?
Our roads. It's just bad, you know, it doesn't look good. Um, there is absolutely zero reason for people to be consuming alcohol while children are playing baseball or playing soccer or any other. children are playing baseball or playing soccer or any other reason. If you wanna have your alcohol, do it at home. And I think that it's, we are, we are following, we would be following suit with most communities in the state of New Hampshire.
Okay, thank you, Sean, appreciate that introduction. Public comments, Rich?
Yes, I do. So I think there's a few, I mean, I think there are a lot of instances where people might legitimately be crossing the public way. I think particularly at my house. If I'm sitting on my porch and I see some, and Lynn and I are having a glass of wine and we see something interesting happening at the pond, would this ordinance prohibit us from walking across, carrying our glass across the road?
No. I mean, we're talking, I mean...
So first off, let me start, let me start again. I think this is a good idea.
If you stopped and had a brawl in the middle of the road, Sean, well, drink my wine.
No, I wanna, I wanna, I forgot, let me start at the beginning. I am completely comfortable saying that the town has the right to say, no alcohol on its property, no kidding, I mean, that's fine. And so, we start from that. And then, then the question I ask you, which is, if Lynn and I wanted to walk across the road and look at balloons in the pond or something like that, carrying our, our drink, would that be covered by this ordinance?
No, because you're basically walking from your property to your property.
Okay.
And actually...
And it's a state road.
And it's a state road, and the state's right of way.
It's right of way, you go home to the center.
I would like to add that I think that this ordinance and all ordinances are meant as an avenue for which strain to be dealt with, rather than your guests at Lockline Lodge walk across that same road and sit by the beach and have cocktails.
Yeah, much as your guests going from side to side.
Yes, I mean, that was, that was to be my next question, you can read my mind.
Private properties on each side, there's no, there's no problem.
But, you know, all, all these, and I think Sean will back me up when I say that they're, they're for addressing problems when they occur.
Absolutely, I get it.
You know, a brawl, anything that constitutes him arriving on the scene, having a little bit more ammunition to do something about.
Yep. I, I'm totally comfortable with that, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, when I read the words here, it wasn't clear to me that I could walk across, in fact, you're right, it is a state road. If the same situation held on a town road between two parcels, private...
Same thing.
Same thing.
I mean, there again, unless you're laying down in the road with your, with your open container.
If you can tell, if you...
I'm probably gonna say, go ahead and cross the road. Whereas if you're laying in the road, then obviously we got something else to figure out.
Well, that's right, no, no, there's a pro, I mean, if there's a problem, you have to deal with the problem, but, so, good.
Discretion is the better part of valor, that's what they say.
Yes, and so, I, the question I ask to the board is, do, I didn't see those words in this particular draft. I understand the intent is not to cause a problem for the folks at A4 or at the lodge or whoever else might have that situation, and so...
Well, I mean, technically, the only, I mean, public places in town-owned property is really where this would govern. I mean, if you're in a car and you're stopped and you have an open container, that has nothing to do with a town ordinance.
Absolutely, right, state rules there, yeah.
If you're walking down Dorchester Road, drinking a beer, you know, it's probably better that you don't do that, because you probably already had enough, that's why you're walking. You know?
Right.
And there again, it's, hey, Rich, you were at the lodge, you still left your glass there, because clearly you're having some navigational issues.
Sure.
How about you dump your wine out and I'll follow you down the road and make sure you get in the house? You know, I mean, and there again, Judy hit it on the head, you know, discretion.
Yes.
You know, this, this ordinance is not, I'm not asking for this.
You know, the reality is, if, if Sean was a stickler and harassing people about the ordinance, do it come back and fight at, at town meeting or in the select board meeting? There'd be people that show up and voice their issues with it, so...
So...
There, there's checks and balances in the ordinance, in the nature of the town.
I, I understand that too, so I'm, I'm being fussy here on purpose.
You still wanna go drinking across the road?
Well, I don't wanna be, have it criminalized, it's not actually criminalized, it's, it's a violation or something, but, so, I would, I would entertain a change, I would welcome a change that made it clear that you can do that, I, I'm not sure what wording to suggest. The other thing that would make me completely content would be a note in this meeting minutes here that say, oh yeah, if you're walking from one side of the road to your property on the other side of the road and not otherwise causing a public problem, that that is allowed, that is permitted.
Get signed, you're going to make an appeal to legislative history?
That, you know, these, this document was, is the exact same document of Hanover's document, is the exact same document of all these other documents. And, I mean, we are nowhere as big as Hanover and or Lebanon or any of these other larger communities. And I'm thinking if they don't feel it necessary to have that kind of wording in the document...
Okay, good.
Probably, just as well as not to have it. Because the more you add, the more confusing people are gonna be.
But Sean, keep an eye on it.
Yes, yes.
We expect you to be patrolling and not waiting.
Straight to the point, and that's that, you know?
That gives you the leeway, well, as with the rec fields and Chase Beach and the boat landing, people with discretion have been down there with no problem. It's the consequence of it. Phil?
I played softball in Keene for many years. And after the game, we have a beer, hang around somebody's pickup truck and head home. It sounds like this would prohibit that kind of activity. And I don't know if that's something that we really wanna, wanna prohibit. And I don't know a way to make an exception for it. But it was a communal friendship thing, nobody got loaded, nobody started fights, we had a beer and went home.
Yeah, well, you didn't play softball in the redneck country like we have.
Well, now, now, wait one minute.
It only takes, it only takes one beer, Phil.
Wait one minute, Sean.
Having been on both ends of that spectrum, I know exactly how it goes.
Well, now, wait a minute, I wanna bring everybody's attention, and not everybody will remember this town meeting. The last time we made a big change in the rec facility rules, it was about this. And it was about no alcohol on the beach, tennis courts, ball field, but you could drink in the parking lot. Now, it still says that.
And that's why this ordinance, one of the reasons, because we...
So, is that gonna take that away? Do we have to change that ordinance also?
Yes, you will.
This one will take precedence of that one.
So it's gonna affect two then, okay.
Because, like, for whatever reason, for why that was enacted, I'm not sure why, but we as a community should not be encouraging people to drink in our parking lots.
Well, then presumably, you have to take that vehicle from the parking lot somewhere else.
Exactly, and the same thing with the...
Anytime you drink anywhere, that's what you're doing.
Pull out all from Route 10, you know?
Correct.
But that's, you know...
The town shouldn't be giving permission for any group, to really, or person's right to consume alcohol, it's... Your insurance company would love if you passed an ordinance like this.
Well, I would like to say that I would not pass this for the insurance company.
No.
I definitely enjoy my cocktails. And I enjoy sitting on the edge of a beach, I have not done that at Chase Beach, I have elsewhere, but discreetly, cleverly disguised. But I also understand that there is an issue with it and overconsumption. And in order to be able to, if you've got something happening on common, let's say, to take action, you need something in writing legally allowing you to take action. And therein lies a quandary for me, but I, I'm afraid that that's where we are these days.
So I wanna say, with this clarification, I'm, I'm okay with the wording this year.
Thank you. We now have permission?
I have only one comment to this thing, and that's that I think that both ordinances ought to be reviewed by town council before we finalize them. I understand they're both taken from precedent from, we adopted language from other town ordinances, so it's likely that this language has already been reviewed. But who knows how long ago the statutory rules in New Hampshire that apply things like this are complicated and vast, and we ought to have somebody look at it and tell us if we need to tweak this or that or make a, make a change here or there, or if it's okay.
You shouldn't really vote on it today, I mean, you should wait for the next day.
No, I don't think we should, but I, I appreciate the comments of the folks who are here. And we will definitely, well, I will move that we send these two ordinances as written to town council for a review.
I'll second.
Thank you, David. All those in favor?
Go ahead.
And I?
Shoot the i. Okay, thank you. And now at ten thirty-five, we will close the public hearing. And on this, these issues, and there will, I'm sure, be follow-up when we hear from town council. Okay, next up.
Oh, yeah, Sean, here, can I just, I want to put Western Bank? I, I noticed in the news the last couple of weeks, there's legislation in Concord talking about the possibility of legalizing cannabis in the state of New Hampshire and various approaches to that. I wonder if you've thought about that at all and whether you have any views about how that might affect the town of Lyme or how the town of Lyme might respond to other things that we would wanna do or not do, or is there anything? We have a dog in this fight at all?
Um, I don't believe that any individual town, community has a dog in the race. It's been a, it's been an ongoing issue for many years, you know? It's, we went from having it being a criminal offense for possessing marijuana to having it, to reducing it to a, just a violation level fine. And, I mean, reality is, we're bordered by three states that legalize it. It's legal. You know, the amount of, the amount of people that law enforcement officers across the state of New Hampshire encounter on a daily basis who are possessing a joint or small amounts of marijuana because they came from another state, it's, it's unbelievable, you know? I mean, I, I don't agree, you know? I mean, if you're high, you shouldn't be driving, if you're drunk, you shouldn't be driving. But alcohol's legal, and people drink it every day and whatnot, you know? I think that, you know, we have our choice to either drink alcohol or not. And if people are gonna smoke marijuana, then they're gonna smoke marijuana and, you know? I think it's probably, I think the governor will sign it. It sort of seems as though he's...
Well, they haven't agreed on it yet, and it's still...
Yes, actually, it's, I think it's about to go to his desk.
Did it, like, it was the last day?
Yeah, the House and the Senate got together in conference committee, or something else.
Yes, yes, so, one of the governor's big issues was sales and that kind of thing, you know, I mean, I don't know how many of you go to Maine or how many of you have been to Maine, but every other house smells, sells dope in Maine. And I, I think that that is, not only the governor, but the governor's council and the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency, their whole issue is about where it comes from and, you know, how it's gonna be regulated in the sales part, so. But I, I think it'll pass, I think they'll, they will hash some things out and, and they'll figure it out, and I think it'll pass, and such is life, we are in the 21st century.
Thank you.
Much to some people's chagrin.
Scott, is my plan to open cannabis supermarket on River Road, you know?
That's a good retirement income.
Yeah, excellent.
And that is something that the town could address through the planning committee or...
Yes, yeah.
I mean, there are potentially reactions. How big of a problem is it, would you say? I mean, in, in terms of your month-to-month law enforcement interactions with people, do you, do you find that the, the use of cannabis is...
Oh, it's unbelievable.
Something that you encounter a lot, and is it a problem, or is it...
As I said, there was a thing, younger people, it was, it was the choice, the beer, the help.
You know, I mean, it's, we have occasional issuances of tickets and that kind of thing, but ninety percent of the time, we either don't know where they have it or whatever, you know? I mean, it's...
You're not seeing...
But you're not seeing regular instances where people go out and get stoned and run somebody over or smash into a tree or, or rob the convenience store to get the, get their munchies?
Probably a handful of our accidents over the years' time is, you know, marijuana-induced, but sometimes there's no way to handle that.
Thank you.
We're going to, we've had a request from Mr. Bulge. He has a deed from eighteen ninety-two, and we've had a request to unmerge or demerge that lot from a larger lot. And thank you, Sean and Scott, very much.
Thanks, guys.
I have some old tax maps, I have some new tax maps. I've spent a couple of hours looking at all of this information, and I know you talked to David Robbins about it. The more I looked at it and the more I calculated, Aiclich, I believe the lot in nineteen ninety-four that was demerged is this lot that you were talking about. But I would like you to show me on a map if you know where this lot is. The lot that you think still exists that was never demerged.
Demerged, no, the lot that was demerged is the lot that I live on now for twenty-three Pleasant Street is.
It wasn't, wait, it wasn't demerged, it was subdivided, it was subdivided.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't a demerger, it was just, they agreed that that had a separate deed and it should be deeded from the rest of the property.
Right, but you are asking for it, for another lot to be demerged.
A different lot?
I think it's the same lot.
No.
Where is that lot? Can you show me on a map?
Well, I don't know if I can show you on a, well, if you have, if you have, if you have the application that my dad put in for current use, he used those boundaries for twenty-one Pleasant Street from, from that deed for his, for the amount of land he had to hold out of current view.
You know where the entrance is, that comes out of that new way?
Twenty-five acres, you mean?
Sort of there.
One and three-quarters acre.
Twenty-five, oh, I thought you were talking about twenty-five.
One and three-quarters acres is the amount of land that your lot was originally.
No.
Yes, and then you added to it. Yes, yes.
No.
If, your, your original lot where your house is was approximately between, between seventy and seventy-six thousand square feet. No, wait a minute, it was one and three-quarters acres, and then you added some more land and a year or two later.
It's a different lot.
Well, okay, then... Well, okay, then, here's, here's the current tax map.
Well, the current tax map isn't gonna show it.
Right, and what I want you to show me is, okay, so we want the current use, which I'm assuming is in here since-
It should be a separate folder that says current use.
That's what I'm looking for. Permits, permits, reshingle, remove portion of, now, this is your request for a demerger. These are T Ds. These are, these are just tax records. This is a septic plan. Is there a reason why it might not be in here? Current use, let's see what this is. Seventy-two, seventy-nine-two, Charles, no, no. This is the boundary line adjustment.
Right.
Not the current use. And here we have a survey.
Current use is probably in Charlie's, his dad's file.
Right.
And, and my, my lock, this lot is right here. This, this is the driveway from Route Ten.
Right, this is the old house?
No, this is the old house.
Well, this is not a new house. This was-
Well, this is a-
The Colonial.
Yes, it's eighteen fifty. The other house was seventeen ninety, so this was the new house compared to that house.
Right.
And that's how we always referred to it, was the new house.
Right, and this is what was annexed. So originally, this was one point six acres, which is approximately one and three-quarters.
Okay.
And then this was added to it to give you the two point oh six.
This was a different lot than this lot.
Yeah, I'm not, this was taken care of in ninety-four.
Right.
Where on, where is the separate lot that you think still exists? I think this was the lot from then.
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
Because it's a separate deed. It's a separate deed for this house. It has, it has seven hundred and something block frontage on Route Ten. The deed for this lot. Do you have the copy of the deed I gave you?
I do, and I read it, but what I'm saying is, so are you saying that this house exists without the extra acreage?
Yes. That's what the deed says. That's what the deed says. This deed says it's one and three-quarters acres. There were, there were three abutters to this lot when that deed was, was written, and one of them was his son. The other one to the south was a Perkins, the one to the north, which was, what I call the Abbott property, was a Vadel. Those were the only abutters at the time. These other lots were added on later.
So that's going to leave... Okay, could you do me a favor, and could you write that down? And email it, or send it to Dina, because I, I'll tell you, I spent so much time looking at this, and I could not figure out, to me, the lot for your house was there. I read this. I know-
Yeah, but if you see, if you see the description of the lot, describe this fall as beginning at the southeast-
Yeah, I read all of that.
All right, well, that southeast corner is the, this property, what was Roy Abbott's property.
Well, you need to spell that out so we can all see it clearly. If you don't mind, that would help facilitate this transaction.
Okay.
Because I was not around in eighteen fifty-two, and I don't, I don't know who all those owners were previously. So that would be very helpful, and to state clearly that this is what you think this deed goes to.
Well, I know that's what that deed goes to.
That would be really, really helpful.
All I gotta do is get us to understand that.
Right, right.
The other thing, well, like I said, if you, if you had that, the copy of his application for current use, it's gonna show what, what that lot size is.
Well, if, we will have to find that, because I don't see it here.
I would say it's in Charlie's lot, the original dad's lot, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we will have to pull that. We will pull that. But if you could write it so that those of us who are a little dense, and not from that era, explain which lot it is, and how it goes around, and we will look for the current use map, and try and put it all together.
Okay.
Because I looked at the current tax maps, I went back in the old tax maps, I read this. As you can see, I made two pages of notes, and I could not come up with anything other than your house lot being the same one. So let's, let's make it work. How about that?
Okay, that, that sounds fair.
If you could help, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
I hate to put you off, but I would really like to resolve it.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Sorry I had to travel so far to get here. I'm sorry I had to travel so far to get here.
No, I know, I know. Really put me out. I don't know where the next stop forgets.
Take care of yourself.
See you later.
Hi.
Okey-dokey. Thank you for indulging me with that. I have no problem granting people's desires when I can understand them. And I'm slow. I have to.
I'm not looking at any maps unless they're up on that map board.
Yes, sir.
Well, have a blow up for the next meeting.
Okay, let's find that.
It's not, I, we, I can't think of his name or town. We helped Roy Day out. He had a twenty-five acre lot, and got a notice from the town that he had to, he was in violation of current use, because they only had twenty-seven acres left, or something like that. The government had come in and redesigned the wall, the woodwork. And we went out with GPS, refound all the boundaries, and found his lot, convinced the government that it was still there, even if they wanted it, he was willing to sell it. But they had to, they had to buy the whole thing, not just steal it.
Well, this case is a little confusing.
This is a little confusing.
Well, that was a confusing one. And things back then weren't the same as now.
No, and when you have a handwritten deed that says from Joe Schmo's house to the Silver Hertz tree, to the, to the, you know, spot on the stone wall, it's not there anymore.
Well, there was, in that one, there was a gore, a V-shaped piece going down to a brook. And you're thinking today, well, why would that have any value?
Right.
Well, they dammed it up, and they had a mill on the other end of it. And the dam was built, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and I'm sorry. I just wasn't getting the answers I needed. I have no problem with him having another lot. All right, we are moving along to, we have permission to work on a classics road and set a bond amount. This is for the shoe scrap road section.
More of a question. That's correct.
And, okay, lead us on, Dina.
I just have a question, whether, I haven't heard anything back from Mr. Snelling.
Okay.
They did get their permit, so they're all set to go. They're raising, my understanding, they're, yes, the DDS permit.
Okay.
And I saw on list R, they're raising some funds.
Okay.
But that's beside the point. But, so I'm assuming they're moving forward. So I didn't know if you wanted to, part of the agreement is that they pay a bond. Now, it doesn't have to be there. You guys have the choice, you know, to make them pay a bond. So that's my question. And/or, I was gonna have you sign this if you wanted to, today. So when he comes in, you can just sign it.
What do we want to do?
This is for the shoe scrap.
Shoe scrap, I think it's for culvert and regrading.
I don't see what bond is for.
Because you, you have somebody, just like we do with projects, they put a bond up.
So this is, this is the neighbors that are trying to do it.
So that if they make a mistake, or if you have to come in and repair it, then-
Yeah, you have somebody to go against.
Well, that's beside the point.
If they did, if they did some sort of damage, or caused some sort of liability to the town, then we would have a way to go against them.
When they're done with it, they get the bond back?
Mine is some sort of relatively modest fee, initially. I, I think if we're allowing people to do something like this, the question is, if there were, if there were liability for the town, would we have recourse absent the bond? And I don't know whether any of these individuals have financial resources to, you know, to go after.
I think if it was big enough to be looking to the town to repair in some way, it would be big enough that probably most individual people wouldn't have the risk.
Yeah, so then we should require a bond, too, I think. I mean, I'm sorry, that adds some cost on their end.
I know, for me personally, that kind of a cost, I couldn't bear, you know? It's just, it's a lot. A bond is not expensive to get, but, yeah, I think you'd need one. So what is a usual bond amount for projects in town?
It's based on the value of the project.
Ah, free.
But, you know, there, I think-
Hundred thousand?
I don't, I have no clue what.
Phil, do you have any idea?
As far as what I saw, they were planning to do all this on a four thousand dollar budget.
Aha.
I don't know how, when, you know, the state and everybody else comes in, and the town comes in and says, there's no way that's rebuildable. I don't know what they're gonna accomplish for four thousand dollars. And if it fails, I-
I'll be right back where you were.
Well, if it fails, it fails.
They're gonna throw a new culvert in, and then dump some hard rock. And that's basically what they're planning.
Yeah.
But I'm not convinced a bond, that's the way.
Okay, well.
You could, you could take a bond. It doesn't have to be a bond. It could be like a timber bond, which is, people fill out for, you know, whatever amount of white pine, that their ten percent timber value is eight hundred and forty-two dollars, and that's what it is. I mean, it could be five hundred dollars, or it could be four thousand dollars, or it could be whatever they're spending on.
Well, it shouldn't be onerous.
No, it shouldn't.
Well, about twenty-five grand, that probably covers us by November.
I think twenty-five would, well, if it's more than that, we've got a big problem.
Yeah.
I was trying to read the RSA. Say one again.
What's the cost of it?
Well, if they're, if you hired someone to do it-
No, the bond.
The bond. It's a couple hundred dollars, right? I don't know. I don't know.
Whatever the cost shouldn't be onerous.
So I'm trying to think, what could they do that would expose the town to liability here? Is there anything?
Not much. We don't have any rights to do anything on that road.
Yeah, I mean, if they did something that caused somebody to be injured, could somebody sue the townsman?
Well, they already signed, they signed off on the liability of it.
Yeah, 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 but-
Well, they haven't yet, but as soon as they sign this thing, they will be.
But, but the fact that they, they're agreeing to indemnify us, that doesn't necessarily protect us. Unless they're billionaires, because their indemnification obligation is only as good as their resources, the resources they have to back up that obligation. So let's, let's try to posit a worst-case scenario. They do a repair.
They bring in a backhoe. The backhoe falls into the, into the river. Nobody gets killed, and they blame you for not supervising it adequately.
Yeah, and they, or they blame us, and we go after them for indemnification, and they say, sorry, we don't have any money, you know? In that case-
I miss the old days, when nobody talked about it in this kind of crap.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. I get that. I mean, and you know what? This is all stuff that's very, very, very unlikely. But I think our job as a slight board is to consider the possibility of something very unlikely and very bad.
But this is a unique situation, because it is a classics road. You're giving them permission to take on the liability, every single liability, all the liability, of anybody driving down that road and going over the edge, or getting hurt, or crashing, or doing whatever.
Drinking or drinking alcohol.
Because it's a class six road.
I'm not a lawyer, but you're, you're a holiday express reporter. Aren't we exposing ourselves by putting, putting a bond on it, and-
Oh, I, I would have thought just the opposite. I think we're, we exposed ourselves when we agreed to let them go out there and do work. But that's my personal opinion.
I think that's right. I think when, when we let them do it, there is a slight possibility that the town could get sued for something that they do wrong. And the fact that they're agreeing to identify us is great, but it doesn't necessarily protect us from getting, from getting sued and having a judgment against us. It just means that if that happens, we have a right to go after them, and they may not be able to make, they may not be able to, to, to make us whole.
We, we have insurance against being sued.
Your insurance will not cover this, because it's a class six road. And I'm telling you, I have an email from your attorney that specifically says, I will repeat what the first part says, but you are not liable.
Right.
Okay, no bond. Let's be done and move on.
I mean, I don't mean that you shouldn't have bond. I'm just telling you.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't see it.
Can I, can I speak?
Who is you?
That's Hebe.
Is that Hebe? Thank you.
Yes, she has her hand raised.
Okay, Hebe.
So I think that a relatively modest bond would show a commitment on their, that they're gonna actually do the job and do it properly. And if their backhoe didn't wind up in Hughes Brook, and they couldn't get it out, there would be some resources available to the town to actually, you know, mitigate the environmental damage. And I think you can get a bond, I mean, it's just an insurance policy essentially. And I think that, you know, they're, it's a relatively modest cost, and worth it to the town.
Thank you. What do we wish to do with this? I'm watching the clock, because we need to be somewhere at eleven-thirty, is a group.
My, my view is that at least a modest bond is appropriate.
Okay.
There's more of you than there are of me.
Under protest, what do we think a modest bond is? Ten thousand, twenty-five thousand? Twenty?
Twenty-five seems fine to me. I mean, that-
Okay.
You're not gonna mess with it if it's five thousand dollars.
No.
You're not gonna go after the bond. They're gonna make good on it. You're gonna figure something out. The only time it's ever gonna be, ever gonna need it is if there's something somewhat serious.
I've always wondered, does the town ever have a bond on the dump that's there? Sleaching chemicals into the brook all the time?
I don't know, I wanna think about that.
Our dump, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna propose twenty-five thousand dollars as a bond. And we need to set a timeframe. It should start sometime soon. We know they're getting ready. It should be finished, what, by October thirty-first? What do we think?
Well, that's fine.
That's plenty of time, I think.
Yeah, there's no reason that long for.
And, so, shall be completed by October thirty-first. Actually, said work shall be completed by October thirty-first, after which time shall restore the road to a condition at least equal to the condition that was present before the work was performed. Well, that seems, uh-
Oh, I put October thirty-first, is that?
That's where I put it to.
Okay, okay, good.
We're on the same page there. Anyway, so the, Jeff Snelling and Greg Hartman, their names should go in there.
Right, that will, yeah.
And then twenty-five thousand is the bond, and fully and completely defended, and so their names as well go in the next paragraph. And then, they also agree to respond timely to any reasonable request for information from the Town of Lyme.
And, and look, also on the bond issue, if they come back to us and say, we can't get this, it's gonna cost us five thousand dollars, whatever-
Right.
And and look, also on the bond issue, if they come back to us and say, uh, we can't get this, it's gonna cost us five thousand dollars or whatever, then.
Then we'll adjust it.
We can we can reconsider.
Yep, okay.
Plenty of information if I could?
Yes, sir.
The cost of a surety bond, a construction bond now is ranging point seven percent to two point five percent. So a twenty-five thousand dollar bond is gonna cost them two hundred and fifty dollars, let's say.
Okay, that sounds perfect. Thank you. You're handy to have around.
On occasion. Margaret will not agree with you all the time, you know.
Well, what wife ever agrees with husband all the time? Okay, um, that's wonderful, thank you. I'm feeling good about this, if you guys are, we'll have Dina work it up and we can sign it and the guys can come in and sign it and hopefully it all works out. Okay, we've done that. I'm gonna bump the bridge reopening celebration, I know we need to talk about that stuff and organize it, but before we do that, we have a CCL lease to talk about and we've got Sean here, we're gonna talk about maybe the back of the common use for parking for the Lyme Foundation's.
The lease getting fast.
Do you know the thing that the Lyme Foundation is having on the common in August? And we talked about maybe making that road or the event one way and putting parking food trailers on the backside.
Just this cover sheet, right?
I've already approved that.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I can take that off my list.
Yes, Dave Caffrey and I have already had that discussion.
Excellent, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to overstep my bounds, but.
Well. Yes.
I left that there because I thought he was supposed to report to you guys what was going on. Oops, sorry.
That's okay. Um, so, the CCL lease.
Mm-hmm.
You guys, we had wanted to bring this back and just see if there, they haven't had any change in their lease since they've been there. Should we be raising the recent tenancy rate or, and Dina did up a little financial spreadsheet.
Jordan did, Jordan did.
Jordan did, Jordan did.
She loves those projects.
Excellent.
I know.
That looked fun to me.
And then I added in that section that you wanted added, okay.
Thank you. Judy, could we get an overview of what the the projection said?
What the, um.
The spreadsheet, the the?
Uh-huh, maybe. It it just shows, um, what the cost was for them and actually, instead of me reading all of this, let me just give you a really good overview right here. My hot hand to your hot hand.
And not everything on that page is included in the totals because, you know, like, we have a phone, they have their own phone, that kind of stuff. But the totals are there for nineteen, twenty, I don't know.
So so this sheet total, uh, lists total expenses for electric, Dead River, phone inspections and all those other, and then.
Yeah, and then put it down in the square marks.
In the lower right is the total expense.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And so that begs the question, the lease has been amended to a paragraph and are we anticipating the change of rent? What do we think?
Well, we're charging lots of costs.
You are charging less.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I'm too close.
So I I I think that's too good a deal.
At the very least, we ought to be increasing the renovation, otherwise we'll effectively lower giving them a rent cut.
Well, we shouldn't be subsidizing there.
No, I think, um.
I do know the increase in use of building is much more than it was when this was set.
So, yeah, so the current rent is forty-six hundred annually and.
Looks like.
Sixty-three, forty-two, forty-six, sixty-eight, twenty-two, fifty-eight.
I was just gonna say, would it sound okay?
Yeah, one year was sixty-three, twenty-two was sixty-two.
Still a deal.
So it should be probably sixty-five.
Yeah, I'm like sixty-five.
I think that we've got evidence that it's hovering right around there. And, you know, based on what it costs this next year, we'll leave it at that, but we will increase it again, but they've been there five years or more. So that's.
Nineteen, yeah, basically, the case started in nineteen. Um, my question is that this lease is up right now.
Yes.
To June, is the increase, is this all increased for right now?
It's for this year.
Or you want, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you wanted to give them a warning, okay. Great. And then you're okay with that one other addition?
Yes, everybody is, yeah.
Everybody is, okay.
So we've approved the lease and an increase of the rent. They are certainly welcome to come back in and discuss if they wish. So, I will move this increase and I will move the additional paragraph in the lease.
So, great.
And then, all those in favor say aye.
Then I'm gonna give it aye.
Judy, aye, so that's approved.
And Judy, it wasn't quite clear what the the current rent, the new rent will be?
The new rent will be six thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
For a year. That's a deal.
Town alignment's a wicked deal.
Just so they're not feeling too slighted, we should mention that we did raise the rent on the house that we rent out.
Pike House, yeah.
The Pike House, thank you. Always wanna call it something else. All right, very good. We have CCL is done, we do need to do a non-public, but we have, um, but we've got a couple non-publics and at eleven thirty we need to do a barney, so. We have a review from the tax collector that I don't require, it does not require any action from us, but it's just an update, I believe, to the board. And, oh, well, here's the big one, this'll take us the rest of the time. The very basic draft of the RFP going out to folks, it's in the packet. And attached to it is some appraisal of taxable property information. And the, um, parcel makeup, total parcel, I found this interesting, a thousand eighty-nine parcels. And I don't know, Ben and David, if you had a chance to look at this draft? If you have proposed changes or if you think it's sufficient to finalize?
I had one question, the very first sentence had a twenty, twenty-three date on it and I didn't.
Right.
Is that just a?
Yeah, no, I don't think you should even consider, um, finalizing it today.
Okay.
Because of the questions that I have, but yes, that would have been a, I think, now I can't find mine.
Here.
I have notes online.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't help with that.
Why not? Okay, uh, let's see. Okay, da-da-da-da-da-da, yes, um. This this was taken from a sample that the DRA sends out, us, other, another town that I was using to help get all the points in. So there's a few things I think that should be excluded. Um, but the big issue for me is, is the board considering doing a statistical update or a cyclical update? And I sent in this little package, the difference, well, actually, chapter seven. You were supposed to have gotten chapter seven, but I don't see that in this, you just have it separately. That describes each one. I don't suspect that you want a total rebal is when they go out and they remeasure every single building and shed and all that. What we should do, what we need to do because it's a, because of the equalization ratio is, um, it's really a statistical one because it's, you already do cyclical, every four years, we do twenty percent of the town and it's already been measured and listed, it's the calculation of the values that needs to be updated and corrected, so that it's within the.
I hear what you're saying, I understand, I think what you're saying. I think, given the issues we've had and the strange economy we've had, I would like to spend the extra money and do a total rebal.
To have somebody come in and measure it, list and do everything?
Yep, that's what I would like.
Okay.
I know.
Well, the the.
It's shocking.
The DRA said.
I will, before we make that decision, I'd kinda like to understand what the cost differential is on those two things.
Humongo, but.
Yeah, it's huge.
But in your chapter seven paperwork, it tells you what the differences are. I I think you guys should take some time and read that, I mean, that chapter seven thing is.
Is this something where he did talk to come and just talk to us about, even though he's not gonna necessarily be doing it or maybe he will be doing it, could he come and just talk to us about, what, the difference between the cyclical and, uh, what the the two types of valuation and maybe give us a sense about what kind of cost difference is and what what sort of value you get for the additional amount?
Yeah, well, I don't know that he'll be comfortable giving you cost analysis, but, or values, but I will tell you that, oh, chapter seven, thank you. Um, I will tell you that I I'm getting conflicting information, um, about whether it should be a statistical or whether it should be a cyclical, so I really want you guys to understand what all of these meaning are.
I don't feel like I do right now.
Okay, so, but I think you do have to take some time to read this stuff because it will make a big difference if you do. It's very. Ex, I don't know why it didn't get put in there, but by gosh, when you leave, you'll have it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um.
Chapter seven, so can we put this on?
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Next meeting's gonna be very busy. Okay.
That's yours.
Uh, we actually have to be somewhere at eleven thirty or?
Yes, you do.
We have to.
Market Street.
Just down the road, yeah.
So it's only, you even sell?
Yeah, we've got to, um.
I would say you could wait and do your all your other stuff, but it's a public hearing, so people can meet there if they want to, so.
Yeah, so we need to do that, um, well.
And then you'll have to come back here.
We've got five more minutes, we've got a couple hardship abatements and hiring of two more lifeguards, so let's see if we can scrooge through that. If we don't, we can hire the lifeguards and do the hardship abatements later. I will move, I'm sorry for the kind of Russian-ness, that we go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A because it's personnel for the hiring.
Please.
Please, and we thank you, Phil, for your attendance and your help. And Rich, for your help as well, your comments.
Very welcome, I will clean out.
Hey, Phil, you left your water bottle.